Madam Chair, I believe we've passed thirty seconds.
All right, thank you so much. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Graham, absent Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano, absent Commissioner Ricardo.
Here.
Commissioner Pumares.
Here.
Commissioner Sebel. You're on mute. Commissioner Sebel? You need to unmute.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Richardson. Commissioner President Gill, absent. Commissioner Cooper.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before me, I have certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this meeting is to review the CRA Community Reinvestment Act reports that the various banks submit. In particular, we will review the banks that currently hold various investments on behalf of the County of Essex. So, to get started, the first bank up that we have to review is TD Bank. So, please state your name and title for the record before you begin with your presentation. So, can we unmute the folks from TD Bank, please?
Yes, he should be unmuted. He has to unmute it on his side.
All right, so Mr. Khan and Mr. Dietrich.
We're here. From what I'm understanding, with apologies, our team leader Josephine Moran is in Lionel's waiting room. And she's really our principal for this event today.
What is her name?
Let her in.
Josephine Moran.
Josephine Moran. Hold on a second here. I don't have a Josephine Moran in our waiting room.
Is she using her computer? Is there a phone?
Is she under a different name?
I don't know. I'm getting a message from her that says she's still in Lionel's room.
If she's under a different computer name, I don't have her name listed here.
Ask her what does she see on the screen. What name does she see on her screen, please?
Would you mind if I muted and I'll call her directly?
Sure. No, go ahead.
I apologize.
It's okay. This is all new.
Sonya can't either.
If I can chime in, I know Mr. Khan, he's from Bloomfield. Let's give him the courtesy of a couple of minutes. He's a relatively good guy.
Oh, no, he got it.
Good.
This is all new.
Mr. Khan, was you gonna say someone else is in the waiting room as well? So, I think Sonya, I think he's saying that Sonya Levin, Lionel, is also in the waiting room. So, can you?
Madam Clerk, Sonya.
Sonya, yes.
Find Sonya for us too, please, Lionel.
Sonya, okay. I... Don't. Okay, hold on just one second. Let me see if I can find her in under a different name here.
Excuse me? Hi. She's saying that she's on a Surface Pro and she can't get in and Sonya Levin Davis can't get in either. I don't know what device she's coming in on.
But Lionel is looking for them right now. In the interest of time, are there any areas of the report that you could, that you two gentlemen can talk about while we're waiting for Lionel to find the other members of your team?
Well, and I can give it a whirl if you're open-minded to me not being rehearsed here, but...
Oh, we won't hold it against you. We understand.
I am certainly well up for the task here, so if you just bear with me here one second and I will get my... Sit a row here. Let's see.
Well, while you're doing that, I want to commend you and thank TD Bank for $250,000 contribution to Newark Working Kitchen. That was phenomenal support that was really needed at a desperate time as we're battling a lot of our COVID issues.
Madam Chair, Providence Bank is up in front of us right now.
I'm sorry?
In front of you.
Providence Bank.
Oh, I'm sorry, Providence Bank. I'm sorry. I won't... On place.
I've been called worse. So, I'll give it a whirl if you'd like me to proceed.
Sure, go. Yes, absolutely.
All right, well, in regards to the Community Reinvestment Act, we're pleased to share that we have a satisfactory rating and done a good job. In regards to our lending activity in Essex County, our home mortgage lending, we've held seventy-six loans.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Excuse me, sir. Madam Chair, is someone else talking in the background? Can we get the other people muted? I think those are the TD Bank folks and we're proceeding with Providence. Let's get TD muted.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chairman, I have Ms. Moran on the phone. Would it be acceptable because she can't get in if she dialed in or, you know?
Absolutely. Absolutely. There is a phone number. Madam Clerk, do you have the number that we can give to their having? No, you already know you cannot have that.
I will get the number for you. I didn't have it in front of me.
All right, so Mr. Khan, just bear with us for one second. Yes.
I thought if you want me just to run with this.
I think we're gonna put Providence on hold and TD Bank is up first. Is that correct, Madam Chair?
Well, let's see. Lionel, if Providence Bank still having some difficulties, can we just move to?
It was TD Bank that was having the trouble.
No, it was Providence Bank that was having the problems. TD Bank is waiting. We can move to them and put Providence Bank on right after them.
If you can provide a phone number, Ms. Moran will dial in and Greg.
I have it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so then let's go. If you got the number, then let's roll with that.
Go ahead.
The number is 855-756-7520. And you hit the extension or password is 70206-pound.
70206-pound?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna mute myself just for everybody.
And while we're doing that, Mr. Dietrich was going to start to talk about the report.
And I do so. So, I'll keep the pace going then here. All right. Open us up here again. So, you know, in regards to the, you know, as I mentioned, our CRA performance, the bank has done a good job and have a satisfactory rating. Our lending activity in Essex County, currently home mortgage lending, seventy-six loans totaling $23,798,061. Small business lending, we did twenty-two loans in Essex County for $23,198,061. And in community development, we did one big one for 2.5 million. Additionally, in small business lending, we processed twenty-two loans for $23,798,061. As far as percentage of loans in the LMI tracks, we have seven loans with 31.8% of the loans in low and moderate income. Percentage of loans to small businesses with revenues less than $1 million was six loans at 22.2% of Essex County small business loans. Percentage of loans of amounts of $100,000 or less is eight loans. Thirty-six point six percent of Essex County small business loans. As far as community development loans, one loan that went into the community services area for $2.5 million. And as far as affordable housing and economic development, we really didn't have anything. As far as grants go, we had $152,000 and details of that are listed under the Schedule B that we provided. Additionally, affordable housing, we provide two grants totaling $20,000. In economic development, we had eleven grants for a toll of $82,000. And then revitalization and stabilization, we had the six grants for a total of $50,000. And then, you know, in your additional questions regarding to the proprietary home mortgage products for low and middle-income borrowers, we provided a Schedule C to your folks with the details. And additionally, in our efforts to serve homeowners and small businesses and minority and low and moderate income neighborhoods, we provided our Schedule D that has the detail. But we've got a partnership with a group by the name of Foundation that helps us offer small business financing and in a real quick and easy, you know, application process. And unfortunately, with this COVID situation, Foundation has been impacted, our partner, and is temporarily not processing loans for us, but we hope to have it restarted sometime, you know, this month. So, we're kind of waiting on news from them, but they unfortunately have had some impact.
Madam Chair, just want to bring to your attention a Ms. Josephine Moran has joined us.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moran. We apologize that you're just getting connected.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much. Let him on.
Josephine, I, if we'd like to, I'm at the, just starting the foreclosure activity. You know, if you wanted to take it over or if you want me to keep on.
Look ahead. Greg, you continue. It's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks, for your patience. As far as foreclosures filed in Essex County, the past year, none were filed in 2019. Providence Bank currently has three loans in active foreclosure where the action was filed prior to 2019, but, you know, all are occupied. We don't have any REO properties currently. And, you know, and the number of REO properties currently on municipal APRA list in Essex County is also fortunately none. Under your additional questions, do you have programs to return abandoned foreclosed property to productive use? You know, the private bank will secure, will clean, maintain, make any necessary repairs to bank-owned properties to make sure that they're marketable. The maintenance of our properties is handled by, you know, one of our third-party vendors and we continually monitor, you know, any ongoing conditions. And it's always the bank's intent to return abandoned properties and foreclosed properties, you know, back into productive use. That's a win for everybody, right? And describing other programs that we have, we're committed to assisting our borrowers that, you know, have involuntary inability to pay. We have a loss mitigation options that we make available to our customers that are considered in order to try to keep people in their homes. The bank's loss mitigation program regarding the residential mortgages is really based on the customer needs, the collateral that's involved and the loan valuation, as well as the desire of both parties look into, you know, attain a reasonable solution. People have to work together to have a great outcome. Program guidelines are consistent with investor requirements as well as Regulation X and Z with the mortgage servicing rules. Retention and disposition of loss mitigation options available are well-defined and consistently applied to each case. Retention options include repayment plans, short and long-term forbearancees such as a reduction or suspension of monthly payments as well as loan modifications. So, we consider rate reductions, the extension of terms, capitalization of past due amounts, reduction of people's monthly payments, and disposition options as well as, you know, short sales and deed and lure foreclosure may be available when the customer doesn't qualify for any of these retention options. The, based on the COVID situation here, it's in accordance with our commitment to help homeowners and our borrowers that have been affected financially and experiencing the inability to satisfy those mortgage obligations. We have some temporary assistance that's been offered to these folks. We have a payment relief effort that's available for ninety days. It's a reduction in monthly payments for first mortgages, forbearance of either the principal, interest, or escrow portions of their payment or a combination of all of the three. This type of forbearance will result in a balloon payment due at maturity. There's probably a suspension of payments for first mortgages and home equity lines of credit, forbearance of principal, interest, and escrow portion of payments. The forbearance plan may be followed by a full reinstatement, a repayment plan, or a loan modification. You know, with the capitalization of the interest and the escrow amounts. Payment extensions for consumer loans, which are our home equity and marine loans, there's not a lot of those, will require an extension of the maturity date. And, you know, you ask about our banking services, you know, we currently got ten branches in Essex County. So, we're, you know, cover County well. All are ADA compliant. And we do have a minority staffing, you know, policy. You know, it's an affirmative action program and we've submitted details on that as well under the Schedule F. And that's kind of all I have there. If you have questions or concerns, anything that we can feel for you.
Well, Mr. Dietrich, thank you so much for stepping in. Ms. Moran, he did a fine job with filling in since you weren't able to get connected. He did pretty good.
I appreciate that. She's the boss.
He did really good. So, freeholders, any questions for Providence Bank?
Madam Chair. I have just a couple. You mentioned, Mr. Dietrich, you mentioned your abandoned properties and they are maintained through a third party partner. Are any of these abandoned properties boarded up?
Fortunately, right now, we don't have any. So, the answer to your question is no.
No, that's good. That's good. And the reason why I asked the question is because when you have homeowners and you have a boarded-up property in that community, it lowers the value of the homes that are occupied. So, I'm glad to hear that you don't have any.
Yeah, and, you know, we take on the responsibility when we do own something, we do keep it up. Generally, you know, we'll make the, you know, improvements necessary to make it marketable. So, you know, it makes good sense for everyone.
And we consistently monitor it as well, just to, you know, to let you know. So, we have the third-party vendor that maintains it for us, but we are on top of it because we don't want the houses to be boarded up.
Thank you so much. And one other question, a couple parts to it. So, homeless vets, there are a lot of homeless veterans around Essex County, folks who have served and served and protected and do things for the rest of us who haven't or who may have served and protected. So, do you have any programs that benefit homeless vets around housing or any of those kinds of things? Have you worked with any nonprofit to help with the homeless problem in general?
Well, we have, we established the Providence Bank Foundation, I would say about thirteen, fourteen years ago. And they play a big role in, you know, addressing a lot of social issues, you know. Not only, you know, homelessness, but we're also concerned about, you know, continued education and better education as well as supplying and supporting a number of food banks. So, that, you know, as well as, you know, the bank, you know, does, you know, contributions as well to the community. But we created the foundation, which full-time job is to, you know, work with the communities in which we serve. The bank's been around for 181 years, you know, we're Jersey-born. And that's 181 years of experience of helping people. And you know what? We're in business this long. It's not by accident, right? It's because we do the right thing and we treat people right and we care, right? Because we live here too.
Excellent. Those are the ingredients for success. Hundred eighty-eighty years, definitely buried that out. Thank you so much for your presentation.
I do.
Thank you. Any other freeholders? Any questions?
Madam Chair, I do have one. If you'll allow me.
Freeholder, yes.
Thank you. This might be more from Michael Khan because I know of Michael's work here in Bloomfield. But most of the downtowns and all of our municipalities have been impacted over the many years and we see hopefully in places of Renaissance. But, you know, maybe Michael can address the kind of things that the bank has been involved with, with the, you know, re-establishment of downtowns and their reemergence. Because I know he's been very much involved with that. And if you can maybe speak a little bit about the bank's positioning on those kind of projects. So, I think maybe sometimes they get a little bit overlooked.
You know, thank you. And you know what? I want to, it's very fitting that Josephine Moran is on the call with us because you and I have been working together a long time in Bloomfield. And I think you see, I'm kind of on the streets and the bank does support organizations like, you know, not only just the BCA, you know, but organizations like the BCA. And you see a lot of our employees are involved in the communities. We don't want to just be some guy sitting in an office. We're out on the streets and we're involved. There's a lot of commitment in the field. And for instance, when we had the fire in Bloomfield Center earlier in the year, it was a phone call that I made to Josephine and she freed up some money for the bank to contribute on behalf of what was going on down there. So, we react to these things. I mean, you know, we're a bank. We work on budgets and we're always looking at, okay, well, next January, we'll do this. Next February, we'll do that. We reacted to that in real time. And I think that's, you know, to Greg's point, that's who we are. And we're encouraged at the retail level to be involved and to have ties in the community. So, I enjoy what I do. You know, like I said, you've seen me around a long time and being on the board that I serve on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it's probably been one of the biggest honors of my life.
And just for a little perspective, the BCA is the Bloomfield Center Alliance, which is an organization dedicated to the revitalizing of the downtown, which used to be, like in so many of our towns, you know, really damaged over the years, lost the business of the malls and now, of course, to online shopping. And so, Michael has had a very steadfast and commitment to working in the bank, you know, partnership by extension with that. So, we're very lucky in Bloomfield and, you know, I know that it's not unique in, while we love it in Bloomfield, I know it's not unique in Bloomfield.
Yeah, sadly, and then this COVID thing isn't making things better, but we're just pushing even harder. I know locally, you probably see it, we're pushing even harder. And even what we just went through trying to get on this meeting, look at how creative we were just to make this happen. And you know what? Necessity is the mother of invention. That's this year. That's a 2020 thing.
Indeed. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Freeholder Primaris. Any other freeholders with questions?
Madam Chair, do you, Madam Chair?
Yes, freeholder.
I heard him speak about the COVID, about the situation with the pandemic and stuff. Have your bank been trying to ante up to get ready for the repercussions of this in 2021? Because you know there's gonna be a lot of shortfalls and things in 2021. Do y'all have a plan that you guys are going to initiate during that period? Well, you know what? It's, we're living it every day, you know. Rufus, I can say to you that, you know, I'm real proud of how our organization has managed through this whole situation. You know, ironically, late last year in 2019, the bank ran through a risk management scenario. And the scenario was what happens if we were impacted by a pandemic? And so, we actually did a dry run. I have no knowledge, obviously, of what was coming. And, you know, it was a real elaborate scenario we went through. And, you know, so we were well rehearsed for when we were faced with the situation. So, you know, come March, you know, when things were, you know, and it's worse than in the beginning of the year, we were quick to, you know, really overnight, we went from coming to our desk every day at work to coming to our dining room table the next day. And we didn't miss a beat in providing the service to our customers. And in doing so, we also put through, you know, incredible volume of the PPP loans, which, you know, was, you know, involved really just about all the employees who are at the bank all joined together to put through, I think it was around $450 million worth of loans that we put out there, you know, working with the SBA. So...
Over eleven hundred, over eleven hundred small businesses.
So, we, you know, and we all did that from the dining table, right? And in a really timely basis. So, now we're ever more prepared, Rufus, because we've been through this. We know that there's rough times coming. We know that there's rough times coming and we're prepared for it. But the bank, like I said, being around for as many years as we've been in business, you know, this, in 1912, we were through a pandemic. We've been through three depressions, umpteen recessions, crises along the way. So I'm confident that we can face anything that's coming at us.
Yeah, because one of the major things is that when this first pandemic hit, you know, they were reaching out and the banks were giving loans and things of that nature. And then for it to continue to go on and it's supposed to get stronger during December and January, you know, they're going to get hit again. And a lot of these small businesses have went into their pensions, have went into their retirement savings to operate something that they thought would be successful and would be good for the communities that they invested to put them in. So it's a thing where my concern at this point is, okay, if they had to come back to you, would you be open to help them? Because they didn't anticipate this happening like this.
You know what? It's, you know, we have to look at every situation on a case-by-case, you know. Like, you know, it's hard to just tell you that, you know, I can solve the world's problems. I don't have the magic wand. But I can tell you that, you know, we're committed to our community. And we've worked with lots of people already. And I don't, you know, we're not going to change the way we do business, you know. It's, you know, just turn your back on somebody isn't a win for anybody. And but, you know, I can't say that we, you know, we're miracle workers either. We do our best. And I think we do a good job. And I'm confident that we're going to face what's coming to us and do so effectively.
I'll just add really quickly that we were in a very good position. We've planned really, really well. If, you know, there's another stimulus, we're going to participate in it. And in terms of our foundation, we have not diminished any funds whatsoever. We've actually added to that. And again, as Greg said, the foundation is the one that really works with the nonprofits. And, you know, we support small businesses, housing, those are the things that we're really focused on. So we're in a good position and we're ready if it gets worse.
Well, I'd like to thank you for the things that you have done. And I just hope that we continue to work together as partners and get things accomplished. And that's it. Thank you.
We, I can assure you that we're committed. And, you know, it's, we're there. And we live here too, like I said. So this is, this is important to us too.
Thank you. Freeholder McCottor, Freeholder Seaball, do you guys have any questions for them? All right. Well, thank you. Before I let you go, I too want to commend you for the work that you've done so far, especially around the area of community development. I was really excited to read your report and see that there was no increase in your foreclosure rate or your foreclosure numbers from last year to this year. And I really am happy to hear about the various options that you have available for homeowners who may be struggling to meet their mortgage payments because their financial situation has changed. So I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank you for your community lending. One of my questions is, how do community organizations and small businesses find out about the products that you have available? You guys have been around a really long time. So is there like advertisement that takes place? How would a community neighborhood organization find out about your community loan products that you have available?
In lots of different ways, Terrell. And the, one of which is, you know, is, I think Michael demonstrates is, you know, he hit on a key point that we encourage as an organization, we're all involved in the community. You know, like, you know, it's, we support, you know, memberships and, you know, in community organizations. So that, you know, we don't only donate money, we have what I call sweat equity, right? You know, we're out there and doing things and being out there. And we, you know, we're putting the words out, you know, our people, which I think is, you know, the most powerful message that we send. But, you know, we also have lots of information available on the internet. Our foundation, you know, also helps us, you know, spread the word. And as well as, you know, various community partners, you know, we're involved in a number of chambers throughout the state. We have opportunities to present in front of people. So we spread the word in a lot of different ways.
Well, I want to thank you for appearing before us this evening. Certainly, I want to highlight your work that you did in Bloomfield with Freeholder Primaris. And I think some of us will reach out to you so that we could replicate some of that good work in other parts of the county. You know, we want to partner with you and repeat that sweat equity for other neighborhoods that could benefit from you. So thank you guys again so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. God bless everyone. Thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
So Madam Clerk, next up is TD Bank.
Madam Clerk, before you give a statement, for those that are in the waiting room and you just have your first name, if you can please put your last name on and your bank so you can be allowed into the room. And there are some people in the waiting room that have no name, just some letters. So if you can please move your cursor to the right-hand top of the box and you'll be able to rename yourself and you will be allowed into the meeting. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it looks like we have one member already, Lisette Morales here from TD Bank already in.
Oh, well, Ms. Morales got a sneak peek as to what we were already previously talking about with Provident Bank. You snuck in there some kind of way. So that means we expect you to hit the ground running with your presentation. Are there other people here with you this evening or you're by yourself?
No, 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 absolutely not. I do have a team here with, I believe they're in the waiting room.
Okay, all right. So we're going to give our staff a moment to pull those folks out the waiting room.
They should be all coming in now. And they're coming in one by one and they're posting their phones. So they're all allowed in from TD Bank.
Ms. Morales, while we're waiting, can you, okay, I see names coming in now. Okay. Sorry, I see Lizette and Cheryl. Is there anyone else from your team?
Yes, absolutely. We have Martin Millelli, who's in the waiting room.
Okay, Martin disappeared?
Yeah. And we have Doug Turnbull, T U R N B U L L.
He's here, Madam President. I see him without a camera, just as a caller.
Okay. And we have Kathy Lindsey, I think she's in.
I don't see her quite yet.
Okay. And Patrick Nicholson. And we have Lizette already here, right?
Right. Lizette is here. So Patrick, I don't see yet. Patrick just came on. He populated. Only person you'll see is Lindsey, Kathy Lindsey. So Ms. Leach, can you please continue to look for Lindsey? And while we're doing that.
It's Kathy Lindsey, K A F I, with the last name of Lindsey.
Right. So our staff continue to look for Kathy Lindsey. And while we're doing that, oh, okay, the person is right there. There we go. All right. All right. So your team is here. You can start to give us an overview of your CRA report, please.
Absolutely. Um, we did send a deck, a little bit is on the, and I believe it was forwarded out to you. And it is actually, what I like to do first is tell you about our team. Our team is myself. I'm Cheryl Griffith and I'm the group manager for government banking.
Excuse me. Someone has, Cheryl, I think you have two screens open. Can you, if you close one, that'll reduce the feedback.
Got it. Did that work? Hold on.
Hold on, she's still here. Oh, she completely closed herself altogether.
So, Madam Chair, would you like someone else to, if the team is prepared for that until she rejoins or you want to wait for her to rejoin?
Well, um.
Hi, how are you? I'm Patrick. I'm trying to to put my TD Bank behind my name and it's not working.
Patrick, that's okay. We just want to hear from you on your report. We would love to see the TD Bank part behind your name. But if you can't, I know I'm technologically challenged.
Okay, yeah. All right. Now, I don't use Zoom often. So that's why I'm over here trying to figure things out now that we're open.
Patrick, it's okay. My five-year-old just showed me how to put myself with a different background behind me. I couldn't figure it out for months. And my five-year-old showed me how to do it.
Send him over so he can help me.
So if you can, if anyone else can continue until Ms. Griffin is able to come back in, you can take it away.
Okay, I figured it out.
Oh, we've lost him. Oh, okay. There you go, Patrick.
Yes, yes. And I figured out the TD Bank.
Okay. Can you continue? Oh, there's Ms. Griffin. She's coming back in.
We're back. I'm back. Hold on. Okay, I am back. We got booted out to a breakout room.
I love technology.
You gotta love technology. I tell you, I'd be much happier seeing everybody in person.
Yes, we all would.
Absolutely.
Okay, are we all here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What I did want to tell you is, little different this year, Monica McCormick Casey, who did an amazing job last year. She was the government banker for many, many years in the area. She did retire and she hung up her jersey from TD. So in evaluating her portfolio, I'm the group manager, I decided that I would take on Monica's Essex County relationship because it's so important to the bank. So that's me, Cheryl Griffith. I'm the group manager for Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey of Government Banking. And we have Martin Millelli, who is the market president for central Jersey, Essex County. And we have Doug Turnbull, who's the RVP for Union and Essex County. We also have Lizette, as you know, our store manager from our flagship Newark store. And Lizette does a ton in the community. We have Kathy Lindsey, who is our group manager for community development and part of our team today. And we also have Patrick Nicholson, and he's our community loan officer for mortgage. So we're happy that the whole team is here. And I did send you some information on the bank, but for lack, you know, we're a little behind schedule. I'm not going to go over our financial numbers. We are TD. We did want to touch on all the things that we do for CRA, but an important thing that went on for all the banks this year, and that is our PPP loans. And I'm going to turn this over to Martin Millelli, who's going to explain the PPP loans and what we did for the businesses in Essex County.
Thanks, Cheryl. So, you know. Okay, so I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't start off by saying just frankly how proud I was for all of my colleagues at TD during the process when Triple P was rolled out back in late March, early April. We literally had thousands of employees overnight totally changed their jobs from going into the office and helping customers face-to-face to being have to become processors and, you know, application, taking, looking at thousands and thousands of applications with the deadline looming to try and help save some of these businesses and, you know, small businesses in particular. And one of the slides that we have in there that I'll just touch on, so during the Triple P process, TD Bank, although we're just an East Coast bank, we ended up finishing number five in the entire US for the number of applications processed. We had nearly 86,000 applications processed during the few months that the Triple P went on for $8.6 billion. And of those dollars, I should say that there was about $155 million that was given just to Essex County businesses alone. There were 1,359 businesses in Essex County that received Triple P funds. And from large numbers, you know, in excess of a million dollars to right down to the smallest was $875 that we processed. Everyone that asked for it, you know, we were able to process their applications for them. The other thing that I just wanted to note real quick was, we have a secondary program that was unique to TD, was called the TD Cares Program. This, the other banks did a similar one where this was where we deferred principal and interest for customers that needed it during the COVID times. And some of them still have it at this point. I just want to let you know that out of all the TD Care programs, deferrals that we processed, there were 100 businesses within Essex County that asked for a payment deferral that received it. All that asked for it got it, but there were 100 of them in Essex County. Fifty-six percent of those were directly to small businesses as defined by the SBA. Just to give you a benchmark, in New Jersey, there was 1,984. And 37% of those in New Jersey were small business. So you can see it's a little bit skewed in Essex County to the smaller business size. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of that background. And like I said, I could not be more proud of the folks at TD of how we handled the Triple P process. Now we're rolling out the whole forgiveness piece. So that we're in the process of doing now. As of right now, we only have about 81 applications in from customers asking for forgiveness. That's just, that's through several counties in New Jersey, not just Essex. I don't have the specific number for Essex yet. Back to you, Cheryl. You're on mute, Cheryl.
Ah, that darn mute button. Your submission or do you want us to highlight some things? During our research, we found out, and I think that you would find this extremely interesting, that we have over 369, almost $370 million in first mortgages out to homeowners in Essex County. And of that, and I knew you asked this question every, we only have three that are currently in default. But in compliance with Governor's Executive Order 106, which as you know, was enacted on 3/19 and did expire on 11/25, but he reinstated it. So he's looking at a possible another two months. And that came in with Executive Order 200 to defer proceedings. And he did comply immediately and we stopped any proceedings on those three. So three out of almost 1,000 is really amazing. And we're very proud to have about $370 million in outstanding first mortgages. Kathy, if you're able to speak to the homebuyers programs and Patrick?
Patrick can speak to the homebuyers programs and I'll speak to the community development if Patrick's on. If not, I'll take both.
Yes, Patrick Nicholas is on. Patrick, you need to unmute. You need to unmute, Patrick.
Okay, there it is. Hello?
Yes.
Sorry about that. All right. So you said the homebuyers program?
Yes. They would like for you to give an overview of the homebuyers program for the bank.
Uh, well, um, well, we have a, a, a few different programs you can choose from. You know, uh, as far as home buyers, um, there's a couple of programs that I really uh, prefer to, to sell for first-time home buyers, especially for Essex County community. We have something called the Right Step Program. Uh, and, and most of Newark and, um, you know, neighboring towns in Essex County fits this program. There's a policy map that allows our clients or interested parties to purchase a home uh, with the littlest three percent down. We have, we also have, uh, the program with no PMI. And about ninety percent of Newark fits the policy map for the Right Step Mortgage Program. That program, I think, is, is, is a better program than FHA for anyone to get into first time, uh, for anyone that want to get into a home, but especially for first-time home buyers. You know, the, the down payment's lower, there's no PMI, and the interest rate is lower. You know, so I, I, I like to push that program, but we also have a Home Ready Program. You know, that also helps customers get into their first home, and it's also a better program than FHA. Uh, the, the, for me, I feel like the PMI or the MI with mortgages is, is what really knock a lot of customers out of qualification for mortgages, you know, but that, that extra surcharge, I, I, I prefer to call it a surcharge, that extra monthly payment uh, that is applied to your monthly mortgage sometimes create a higher debt to income ratio, and other clients don't qualify. You know, so the programs that we have at TD, we do have a couple of program, we, we do, of course, still sell FHA products. But I, I do have a couple of products that will help the community a, a lot more than what FHA can do. So, um, you know, we have options that I think that will work a lot better for the community, you know, and, and if, if the city of Newark or, or any Essex County program that's available, if we can map that with our Home Ready or our Right Step Program, will be really providing a great service for the community of Essex County. That's pretty much it. If I could get a list of programs that's available, down payment assistance or closing cost assistance, you know, and, and map that with my pricing team, I'll be, we'd probably be able to really help Newark, Essex County, East Orange, the whole, everywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to speak a little bit about, um, our, our community development loans. So covering some of the work that we do in the CRA area. As you can note, um, we have received an outstanding on our CRA exam and the last exam. Um, and we are working really diligently to receive an outstanding again. In terms of our community development loans in the Essex County area, um, we've done over forty-four million dollars. Twelve of those are in the affordable housing, so it's over thirty-four million dollars in affordable housing, um, which we're really proud to support. Um, in addition, we also work in conjunction with the Charitable Foundation, and we've contributed over four hundred and seven, over four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, from the foundation in the, in this last year in the grant cycle for Essex County. Um, and one of those, and in addition, we've also done, um, a, a grant for Newark Working Kitchens, and that was in direct response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and all the implications that came from that. Um, some of the other investments that we've made through the foundation have been to the New Jersey Performing Arts Center, the Urban League of Essex County, the Summer Youth Employment Program in Newark, and United Way of Greater Newark. Um, so if you have any other questions or, you know, specifically till the end around the community development loans, I'd be happy to answer them, but very proud of them.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, um, can I just tag on to that? So, the Newark Working Kitchens, uh, we had donated through our foundation, the US Bank Foundation, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards that. And not only did we, we supply the dollars, which is always the easier part, right? But the harder part is, is your, your people talent to be contributed also. And so what we did is, we actually did have five individuals within the bank that, uh, named to, uh, work with the, the folks in Newark, uh, the restaurateurs, um, to try and help stabilize your business during these times. And the, the one thing I also wanted to add, and it hasn't been published yet, so I know this is a public forum, but I'll throw it out there. We actually just got news that our Canadian, uh, foundation is also donating an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the program as well. So it'll be a total of five hundred thousand dollars that we put into that program, which is a fantastic, uh, partnership with Audible and, and other fine businesses within Newark. So I just wanted to give you that update. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming this evening. I wanted to commend you and highlight that support to the Newark Working Kitchen, especially during this climate that we're in right now. Every dollar, all the support is always needed to help keep our communities moving forward. Freeholders, any questions for TD Bank?
Madam Chair, through you.
Freeholder?
Yes, um, let me begin by, um, thanking each and every one of you for your presentation, and I'd be remiss if I didn't extend my warm greetings to my good friend Lizette Morales. She's a neighbor. We work next door to each other, and we live in the same community. And, uh, we've had many discussions about what TD Bank is doing in the community. And, um, one of the things that we spoke in length about was financial literacy. How can we get more financial literacy to our young people as well as, um, our urban communities? The Latino community in particular, the African-American community, how can we educate more, um, from our older generations to our younger generations? And how can we engage, uh, community? Lizette has just talked about several, uh, initiatives that she has done in the community. If she could speak to some of that, and even in, um, some of their seminars are in, um, in Spanish for, for those that have a language barrier. So, um, Lizette, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Robert. Hi, everyone. Um, yes, just to piggyback on, um, Freeholder Mercado. I want to, I would have to say that, you know, I'm, I'm so proud to work for, for any, a bank especially, who is totally devoted and invested in their communities. They are, TD Bank is as diverse as it gets right now. I live in Newark. I grew up in Newark. I went to school in Newark. I played sports in Essex County, so oh, the majority of everything that I personally do through the resources and the tools that the bank does provide is, is generally, you know, at a grassroots level. I currently participate in the Board for United Way of Greater Newark. I participate on the Board of Focus Hispanic Center. I also participate on more and in my conversations with Freeholder Mercado, a lot of the, the commonalities are about financial literacy. Whereas we can bring them about in the Newark School Board, where we want to be able to partake and create curriculum around this area. Because I'm not the type of professional or individual that likes to put Band-Aids on certain things. I like to get down to the, the root of it. And I think that if we can build something together, um, utilizing our resources, our team, like today with Kathy and Cheryl and Mark, be able to provide this opportunity to our community, I think it would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Um, Freeholder Mercado, back to you.
I'm sorry, Freeholder, um, uh, one of the other, um, you know, I, I really want to commend on the, the ground, the grassroots efforts uh, and the partnerships that TD has had, um, uh, with the Newark, with the great, with the Newark community, but, uh, the Essex County community. And, um, my, my district is, represents Newark, so, um, obviously I'm going to focus on the Newark side of it. But, um, I want to thank each and every one of you and the work that, um, that TD Bank is doing. And we, uh, look forward to, uh, future partnerships and, um, continue the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Mercado. Any other freeholders? Any questions for TD Bank?
Question, just a comment, Madam Chair. I also want to commend TD Bank for, I, I, I love the fact that you guys are open seven days a week as well.
Yes.
Yeah. I, um, my, my local union, actually, we have an account with TD Bank that we are satisfied with. Except for you don't give enough interest. You gotta folks more interest on their money.
Amen.
We are happy with TD Bank. So thank you for coming in and your presentations are well-received. And, uh, to, um, Commissioner Mercado's point and Lizette about the financial literacy, very important, especially for first-time home buyers and those kinds of things. The one thing about money, it doesn't come with instructions. So, we don't all know how to handle money. I, I didn't always.
Right, right.
I'm doing a lot better now. But no, it's a very important, uh, financial literacy piece. So, uh, thanks again for coming in and all that you do.
Thank you.
Wait, well, I got, I do have one question that I did want to ask. And that's around, uh, veterans. So, y- you guys work for nonprofits in terms of building housing or doing anything for homeless vets? Or would you happen to have, this is a, a nonprofit asked me to ask this question. Would do you have any discounted property or land that they could get so that they could work with you guys to put some units online for veterans? Is there anything like that in your portfolio?
Kathy and Martin?
So, I'm not aware of any, of any, uh, land or, or buildings that we have that, that would be available, but I'm certainly happy to go back, and that'll be a takeaway for us to, to check back with you. I know we do have veteran programs specifically, uh, for home buying and, and, and that, and I'm sure that, uh, my partners can speak to that. Um, we do have also within the bank, um, just, it's, it's an internal thing, but we do have within the bank, we, um, we have different programs, uh, specifically that are run by veterans, uh, that, that work for the bank. So, and they have outreach programs, so we can reach out to those folks and see if there's anything specific that they can get, uh, to help us with. But again, I'm not aware of any properties that we have at right now, but, but we'll, we'll have that as a takeaway for us.
And, and also, um, oh, I'm sorry. And for any, I'm sorry, for any nonprofits, um, that are interested in, um, working with us and, and, you know, I'm the point of contact for that as well as, um, Martin, but you can, you know, feel free to, um, email me directly, and I'm kathy.lindsey@td.com. So please, you can, feel free to give them my, um, contact information, and I'll follow up with them.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Also, Mr. Richardson, I, I agree with you on the, uh, financial literacy portion of it. You know, not so many folks know that they can put three percent down on a home, have lender-paid MI, you know, uh, minimum credit score of six sixty. You know, a lot of folk think that it's a lot harder. Um, I remember when I bought my first home, I thought I literally saved twenty percent because I thought that that's what I had to do, you know, before getting into mortgages. If someone told me a program that was three percent, a program with no PMI, I still call it PMI. But, you know, if, if, if someone, you know, gave me that knowledge, I would have become a homeowner a lot sooner than, uh, waiting. So, i- if we can figure out a way to share this information, you know, uh, amongst the community, a- and I know it'll be hard during the COVID times, you know, but if we could figure out a way to do that, I'm sure that a lot of homes, uh, you know, will have a lot of homeowners in, in the city of Newark, and, and that will pretty much homeownership changes neighborhoods, you know, I, I just totally one hundred percent agree that that's the, the, what will make Newark a lot better than, or continue to grow like it has been.
Thank you. Sounds like another Zoom meeting where we're going to have you guys on, and we're going to talk about financial literacy to the general, uh, public, to the public at large about homeownership.
I like that idea, Freeholder President. I was taking some notes down as you were saying it.
That is actually an excellent idea.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank TD Bank for their participation in the community because I worked for Senator Rice for seventeen years as his chief of staff. And I've seen the, the work that TD Bank has done in the communities. And especially, I want to give a little shout out to Lizette Morales because this year passed, we decided to do a, a, a house music concert virtually. And, and it was very, very successful. And thank you for your contributions to help us do that because a lot of people were afraid of it because they didn't know how it was going to turn out. But thank you very much for your participation.
Well, thank you, Freeholder Johnson. Um, if there's no other questions for TD Bank. Before, um, we let you go, I too want to just highlight a couple of things that I read in your report that I just want to commend you on. I really appreciate the bank's lending to the municipalities within Essex County and to our school boards. That's critical because it helps us to help our municipalities to keep things moving. And I would encourage you to reach out to the other municipalities and the school boards to offer whatever your financial, financing programs would be around the things that towns and cities and school boards would do. The other thing I would like to ask is for you guys to please send us some information on your Right Steps and Home Ready Program, because I think that's an important piece towards homeownership. We often think about the federal mortgage products when you put down a three percent. But you're right, that PMI, that traditional PMI cuts into the family's operating costs, their liquidity on a monthly basis. So if you can send those, those flyers to us, would be helpful as we all traverse, you know, residents on a, on a daily basis that's looking either for business lending or for home, um, conventional mortgages. So we would certainly, um, dispense that information because we, if it's a right product and a good for, for our constituents, those are the things that we'd like to see more of. So again, I thank you guys for your time, and I thank you for sharing your report, and I want to encourage you to keep up the good work because having just three foreclosures here in Essex County make us all very proud. So thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Madam, the next bank up should be Valley National Bank.
Yes, hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, and, um, it's good to see everyone. Of, of course, we wish it was under better circumstances. I am Jerry Flack with Valley Bank. The Community Development Program Manager. And I am in the Corporate Social Responsibility and CRA Department. I am also the CRA Regional Officer for New Jersey. And Ron Frazier has joined me this evening.
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect.
All right, so, um, thank you so much for coming this evening. Can you please give us an overview of your CRA report? Any, highlight any issues that you'd like for us to really focus on and know?
Okay, great. And so, you, please forgive me if I'm not looking straight at you because I do have this small computer here and the report, uh, on my left, uh, screen here, which is much bigger.
No worries. We're all doing the same thing.
Good. It's certainly easier on the eyes, especially when it comes to numbers. So, let me go through quickly and certainly address any additional, uh, questions or discussion that you'd like to have. So, you know, within the, you know, CRA, uh, model, obviously, we look at lending. And, uh, first of all, you did see to take a step back that we did receive an outstanding rating from the OCC. And that's something that we're, you know, really happy to see as an affirmation for our commitment to our communities. Um, and so on the lending side, then, um, you know, we had, uh, on the report, we said there was about two hundred and seventy-three small business loans. We had fifteen community development loans worth about sixteen million. Um, on the investment side, we had a little bit more, uh, interesting things going on there. We had, um, covered, we reached about twenty-five organizations directly with We had covered, we reached about 25 organizations directly with a little over 200,000 in grants in Essex County. We also, a majority of our neighborhood revitalization tax credit funds, which should be on everybody's mind because it's that time of year that those monies are allocated. And we had about 200,000 of that likewise that got allocated to three projects in Essex County. Partners we work with there, Hands and Orange, and the Lincoln Park Cultural District. I've been excited about that project for years. And additionally, of course, the Urban League in Essex County. And a couple of the things that, you know, what makes us unique, certainly relationships. And additionally, on the residential mortgage side, we have some phenomenal affordable products and a variety of products. We, I would say among the banks, we really lead with respect to having literal feet on the street. You know, really working on accessing first-time, reaching first-time homebuyers and putting them in the home of their dreams. I will say, and I don't have to tell you, that this is a tough market to do that in. We have more and more people joining our virtual first-time homebuyer forums that we're doing these days, obviously. And then, we have community mortgage officers. I have one that I work with all the time in the New York and New Jersey region. And then additionally, I guess, you know, I think you saw in the report, we have a 7A product. So, and this year, we've done even more to really, again, increase our outreach and ability to reach small businesses, really the pride of all our communities, to say the least. And so important, obviously, to rebuild our economy during this difficult time. And then finally, well, I think what you mostly want to know, in that respect, we have no REO properties, no foreclosure. So, this is, that's the way we like it. And then finally, you know, what I did send you is our Corporate Social Responsibility Report. We do produce one of those every year. And again, this is all for 2019, you know, the context. And to that end, our pillars have pretty much remained the same. And I hope you hear it in what I said and I'll, you know, quickly conclude with those. Obviously, we focus on affordable. Okay. We focus, the recording stopped. Is that okay?
Yes, yes.
We focus on affordable, promoting affordable housing, inspiring innovation and entrepreneurship, stimulating economic and community development, and living our commitment to impactful local leadership, which includes, you know, quite a bit of volunteer engagement, including our community mortgage officer I mentioned in the report is on the board of two Essex County, specifically Newark, Essex County nonprofits, one in Newark, one in Montclair. So, I'll leave it at that and see if there's other questions that, or discussions that you would like to have.
Ms. Flack, I just have one quick question before I open up questions to the other freeholders. Do you do conventional mortgage lending?
Yes.
How much is your total portfolio in Essex County for mortgage, conventional residential mortgages?
Let me see if, I don't think I have that at my, right in front of me on my screen. But I could come back to you with that. So, we do track that in my department. We track that by assessment area. While we're speaking, I could pull up the 2019 board report and tell you where we were at in the assessment area, which, you know, includes Essex County, but I don't have Essex County at my fingertip because we don't have to report that way. So, just as with this report, I would have to extract that.
Would you please, you don't have to, if you don't have an answer today, that's fine. You can follow up and come back to that.
Okay, just give me the short, making sure, I want to write down the question. So, for Essex County, you want to know how many residential loans we did?
Yes. How many do you currently have?
Okay.
Okay. So, any freeholders, questions for Valley National Bank, Valley Bank?
I have a question, Freeholder Cooper. I have an account at Valley National and I'm very curious. It was called Valley National and now it's called Valley and National was eliminated. And I'm curious to know the reason, what happened?
Thank you so much for that question. Well, first of all, and also, I forgot to say, we do have 18 branches. And so, maybe those are, in Essex County, maybe those are one of the ones you visit. So, we did do a rebrand, okay? So, legally, we are still Valley National Bank, but we do go as Valley Bank. Usually, when I send the logo out, and actually, I just sent Lincoln Park our logo this afternoon, I do leave the bank on there because up here in Wayne, where our headquarters is, we have Valley Hospital and likewise. So, if we don't put the bank on, people think we're the hospital. But essentially, we're, it's the same company in short. So, you'll look in our legal reports and our, including our performance evaluation says we're Valley National Bank. But for the branding, we have a new logo and we're Valley Bank.
Right. I go by Valley Bank. But why did you eliminate Valley National Bank? What happened to the National?
Oh, jeepers. You know, I'm not the marketing person, so I can't really, I don't know exactly. You know, I don't always agree with marketing either.
Because all of a sudden it changed and I didn't understand why.
In this case, I'm fine with it, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not really sure. I mean, I think it's, you know, to be maybe shorter, you know, do you like the new logo?
I have no problem with it. I was just curious to know what happened that all of a sudden it changed.
A lot of it had to do with, everyone knew Valley National Bank as Valley. So, we just rebranded it.
Okay.
That's good. Ron answers all the tough questions.
All right. As long as there was no problem. You just changed.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
And you should have noticed, you know, a new, you know, we've actually done a lot of investments in our branches. And you should notice a new look and a new logo and so on and so forth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Freeholders, any other questions?
Do you, Madam Chair?
Yes, Freeholder.
First of all, thank you guys for coming and thank you so much for your presentation. Just have a couple of quick questions. Do you have any support for nonprofits around veteran housing? Do you do anything around that? Anything for the homeless?
Well, yes. Now, you know, I'd have to, like, off the top of my head. So, for example, you know, and I'm glad you asked that because I didn't even put it in here. But one program that I also help the bank manage here is the Affordable Housing Program. We did recently get two awards this year. None of them are in Essex, but in the past, I'm pretty sure some were. And that particular, you know, those are really big, complex projects. And most of them, and that program in particular does give you credit. And most of them have, let's say, a set aside for homeless, okay? So, by way of saying then that, you know, we're not obviously doing this building, but we then support programs and developers and, to your point, nonprofits that do those activities. And so, another example, I guess, would be habitats. I don't know how active the, you know, Newark Habitat is. I myself worked for the Patterson Habitat and we've done, we do a lot of work with the habitats. I know some of their homes go to veterans. And I know some of the nonprofits that we work with support veterans. I guess one that I can think of in New Jersey is New Jersey Citizen Action. And, you know, they're a big advocacy organization. And one of the big pieces of advocacy that they continue to push is the whole student loan issue. And that affects veterans in a big way, you know, a lot of the scamming there. So, you know, by way of indirectly, yes, and those would be, you know, some examples.
Thank you so much. What I'd like to do, if possible, if there's a contact person that can get that information to the clerk, I would love to flush that out to see if there's anything, maybe on a smaller scale, that the bank would be willing to do.
Well, sure. I mean, I guess is, so, so that we would arrange then, you have a developer, you're interested in lending or in working with a nonprofit that perhaps we're not currently aware of, that might be?
Yes, yes.
So, can I ask the name of the nonprofit?
I don't have the name. I just know the person.
Okay.
She's a veteran. Matter of fact, we just, Essex County just honored her at our Veterans Day. Her name is Kit. She's from Irvington. She has a nonprofit. She's building veteran housing up in Buffalo, oh, no, upstate New York because she hasn't been able to find anyone to help her here in Essex County, where she's from and where she lives.
I see.
So, I'd love to connect you. And this is where I'm getting these questions from.
Okay.
I'd love to connect the two of you and then I could get out of the middle.
Okay, sure. Sure. And I can explore further. So, I have, and I appreciate that. Look, that's what we're all here to serve, is the community. So, I do appreciate that, you know, connection. If there's something we can do,
Absolutely.
You know, we could certainly, because we do.
At least have a conversation, you can or you can't.
Sure, sure. And perhaps I could
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Some ideas, because I did work for the Habitat and did do some funding proposals for them as well. So.
Thank you so much.
Freeholders, any other questions? All right. I have a question.
Madam Chair, it's called New Hope Village for Veterans. That's the name of the nonprofit.
There was New Hope.
Thank you. Village for Veterans. Right. Yeah, I'd love to connect the two of you.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do have a question about your report. Where it talks about units, is that referencing like the number of housing units that you finance or the number of loans or widgets in that area that you disperse? Like, so for an example, under your on-page, I guess it would be, it says
Buses are odd, yeah.
It said development category amount and then units under affordable housing. It has a number.
Okay, let me explain that. Thank you. So, so those are the categories that, I hope those were your categories. That's why we included them. But they're the basic CRA categories, affordable housing, community service, economic development and revitalization and stabilization. Those are grants that we made to organizations then, the total amount of dollars to organizations that primarily focus on affordable housing, that primarily focus on community services, primary economic development, primary focus revitalization, stabilization. And then the units are the actual number of grants. So, what you can see there is just looking at this particular table, to your point. You know, we then, that's 25 organizations that were reached. You can look at it that way. And I don't want to, I want to point out, we also donate to organizations that, like I think I mentioned, Housing Community Development Network of New Jersey, membership organizations or Supportive Housing Association that has their virtual event this week. And those organizations have members that are in Essex County. But I, you know, so I just mentioned that.
Gotcha. All right. Well, thank you guys so much for coming before us this evening and providing your report. Have a good evening. Stay safe.
Godspeed and all blessings of the season.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Accordingly.
Yes, you can email it.
We will. Okay, cheers. Good luck with the rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Madam Clerk, Industrial Bank. Yes, Madam Chair, Industrial Bank should be up next.
This is Lionel. Industrial Bank will be up in 20 seconds.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we're almost counting down. Oh, I'm striking off as we go. Striking off.
Mr. Bullock is up from Industrial Bank.
Mr. Bullock, thank you so much for being with us this evening.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. How are you?
I'm okay. How about you?
I'm very well, thank you.
So, you can please give us a quick overview of the report. You can take the liberty of highlighting the areas that you want to discuss and then we'll follow it up with some questions from the board.
Sure, thank you. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to come before the freeholders so that I can discuss Industrial Bank. Industrial Bank is new to the area as of 2020, however, new in an old sense. Industrial Bank acquired City National Bank, which was the only African-American owned and operated financial institution in New Jersey. City National Bank went under November 1, 2019. An industrial bank whose house in Washington DC, which is another African-American owned, third-generation owned and operated bank out of Washington DC headquartered there, decided to come in and purchase the assets. Kind of unprecedented for an African-American bank to acquire another African-American bank in this time and that kind of stuff. But we can thank FDIC. We blame them for quite a few things. We can thank them for putting this together because under normal circumstances, the deposits for the bank that went under would normally go to one of the larger banks or the largest banks that are close, the closest in the area for the customers. So, with that being said, Industrial came in on 11/1/2019 and came in to reorganize the financial institution. Industrial Bank is the, in the top five, and we tether back and forth between three and four. But there was one merger that actually took place. So, Industrial Bank is either the fourth or the fifth largest African-American owned and operated financial institution in the United States. One of now only 21 that are remaining, right? The main thing to take away is, since we are African-American owned and operated, we are also a minority deposit financial institution. And what that actually means is, in terms of CRA and community involvement, over 60% of the deposits that we take in and the loans that we issue out must be in undisturbed and underbanked markets. So, it's something that we do continuously every single day and have done from inception. The good thing about it is Industrial and City National have very similar backgrounds and have worked together in the past. I was actually a part of City National Bank and was asked to stay on to, as the market manager for Industrial Bank North, which encompasses the New York market and the New Jersey market. With that being said, the last time I was here, I think Industrial, City National Bank was under consent order. So, it was extremely limited to what could actually be done in terms of market. Industrial Bank is not under any type of consent order, which is a good thing. We're very solid and very strong in terms of where we are in the spectrum of community banking. Our sweet spot, individually, we can loan up to about $8 or $9 million, which may be small for some of the big banks. But we're a small community bank and most projects fall within that realm. However, if we need any additional assistance, their partners, community partners, Goldman Sachs, Prudential, have been very, you know, very favorable to us to allow us to be a part of a lot of the projects that they undertake throughout the communities. And so, we do stuff with them in addition to organizations like New Jersey Community Capital and others who are actually in our market, making homeownership affordable to individuals. The last CRA rating for Industrial Bank was outstanding. The good thing about the merger is, since we were limited in scope to what we were able to do before, we now have a full effective, the end of June, the merger actually took place. So, we're one system. We're now allowed to do residential mortgages, commercial mortgages, all of the stuff that we were not allowed to do when we were under the consent order with City National Bank. So, that's a plus for us and especially in our market. And we have seen the uptick in the referrals. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, because of the customers that we actually serve, a large portion of our portfolio have been in deferments. Deferments in the sense of postponing paid payments, principal and interest payments for our customers so that they can maintain their businesses while this pandemic is actually taking place. So, we're on our third round of deferments. We started off back in February. So, uh, we're on our third round of deferments. Uh, we started off back in February. Uh, deferring customers who were having some challenges and it just continued. It doesn't appear to be getting better. So we're looking and working with customers to see what we could actually do to support them. Uh, we were very active in the PPP, uh, process. One thing I can say, uh, and I'm very proud of, uh, and I fought for Industrial Bank. We not only took our customers who were small business customers, but we also processed loans for customers who banks would not process their PPP loans because the dollar amount was too small. Uh, we had loans as small as $1,000 and $1,500 for some customers, for quite a few customers who were not ours. The thing with that is it's all of the same paperwork. It's just that because of the dollar amount, there really is no revenue that's actually generated from it. It's actually a service that's actually provided to the customer. So we not only took on our customers, but we took on, uh, small, other small businesses that were in our market as well.
Thank you. I have a question. Did you, um, I'm, the report that I got from our office staff, I think I may be missing some pages. Like some of the things that you just went over, I don't have. So I'll follow up with the staff later to, to, to find out some things. Do you have any, um, residential mortgages?
Madam Chair, we, we do residential mortgages, yes. We, we have residential mortgages in our portfolio. Um, we just started doing them, as I mentioned, uh, in June. Uh, so we just started taking applications under the new bank. Uh, so thus far we have done, uh, I'm sorry, there's something popping up on the screen.
Okay, so just this past June? Okay.
Just this past June, yes. So, but we have done, uh, uh, mortgages, residential mortgages as well as, of course, commercial mortgages in Essex County, primarily in Essex County, because that's where, uh, our New Jersey headquarters is. We're right here in Newark downtown.
All right. Thank you. Freeholders, any questions?
Through you, Madam Chair. I have the same question that I've been asking everyone. In terms of the nonprofit, do you guys, um, do anything around veteran housing or housing for the homeless? And the reason why I ask the question, there's a, a nonprofit, uh, who is interested in doing that here in Essex County. So far, they're only able to build upstate New York. For whatever reason, they haven't been able to put together a partnership here in Essex County. Uh, and I would love to be able to connect you and them. So maybe you could have a further conversation to see if you can, uh, help them. Homeless population here in Essex County is exploding and, you know, it's just as bad for veterans. So I don't know if you guys do any grant programs or do anything around, uh, homeless vets.
Freeholder Richardson, how are you first of all? And thank you for bringing that to our, to our attention. Without any question, that is what we do. I mean, all day, every day. Our portfolio, our Industrial Bank's portfolio is primarily made up of faith-based organizations. So churches, mosques, and synagogues and nonprofit organizations. That is the vast majority of our portfolio. I was directly responsible for lending, uh, at City National Bank when we were in the lending business. If you have someone who is interested and able to build housing for homeless and for veterans or whatever, I will give you my personal cell phone number direct so that they can call me. And if they're ready to start, I am willing to lend tomorrow. I'm very serious about that. Uh, I, I come in and out of Newark every single day. So.
Madam Chair, I wouldn't want you to put that on the record. On the record. Just email that, uh, back to the contact that you've been getting information for, for this meeting. And I'll make sure that it gets to Commissioner Richardson. Freeholder Richardson?
Oh yeah, no, excellent. Yeah, I'm tongue tied, you know. It is never that easy.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but it's, it's something that we do every single day and I'm very passionate about it because I pass and we have a medical facility that's right out here. We have the shelters that's right across the street or whatever. So I see how not everyday living has taken a toll on, on folks in our community. I'm more than willing to help in any way that's actual possible to sit down with them, even to work on individuals who are willing to build. I'll sit with them and help with them, put a package together.
Excellent. Appreciate you. We'll be in touch.
Any other questions? For Industrial Bank, as you know, I was about to call you City National.
I, I know, we're still.
Industrial Bank. Any other questions? So I will reach out, like I said, to the staff because there are some questions that I know I would have, but I don't see the information here. So I'm going to say thank you, Mr. Bullock. Bullock?
Blaylock, it's mine.
Blaylock. Thank you so much for appearing before us. We appreciate you. And I will follow up with an email for additional questions that I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks a lot, uh, freeholders.
Stay safe.
Madam Chair, the next bank is PNC Bank. They have quite a few individuals on. So if you can ask them to just please let us know who's in the meeting, who should be in the meeting. Thank you.
Freeholder Cooper?
Yes.
I just want to state that within 15 minutes, I'm going to have to leave.
Okay, okay.
Just wanted you to know.
All right. Thank you.
So that's what you have to tell her. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I was just informed that for, uh, Industrial Bank, the information you were looking for was, is on a flash drive that was probably in your packet. So you should have the information.
Okay, all right. I will go to the flash drive. All right.
And that, that's in regards to Industrial Bank?
Yes. So I'll look, there's over later. Um, so PNC Bank. I see some new names appeared. Uh, Thomas, can you tell me some of the names that are in the waiting room so that we can grab the correct parties for you?
Sure. Should be, uh, we have myself and Antron. Uh, An is there on the screen. Also looking for, uh, Bill Best. And, um.
Hey, Tom, it's An. I, I have the list. I can go over.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Good evening. Um, this is Antron. So, uh, Bill Best, Lloyd Doaman, D O A M A N. Tom is on right now. Uh, Sam Macri, M A C R I. Melissa Boestetter. Ed Morales. Uh, M O R A I S. And then, uh, Ramsey Harris.
Okay, so while we're working to grab those people from the waiting room. So it looks like, uh, Tom and Bill is here. Sam is being connected right now. It looks like.
It's on.
Melissa's on. So Ramsey is, looks like Ramsey and Edward is who we're still trying to get for you. So in the interest of time, um, can anyone start to go over your CRA report? We're asking for the banks to do a quick overview, highlighted overview of the items that you like to discuss from your report. And then, um, it'll be followed up with questions by the board.
Yes, um, yeah, this is Antron. Can I just give a quick intro?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, so, um, my name is Antron and I'm a Senior Vice President and Relationship Manager in, in Public Finance, um, at PNC. And I help manage our government portfolio within public financing in this region. Uh, so first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to, uh, you know, to, to be Essex County Banking Partner over the last, you know, 10 plus years. It's an important relationship for PNC and we look forward to working together. Uh, Mark Eckler and Nick DeSantis, who are our primary day-to-day contacts, you know, have been great partners for us as well. So, um, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're very happy to be involved and active in Essex County and more broadly, you know, throughout the state of New Jersey. You know, as a mainstream bank, you know, we're, we're committed to providing good customer service through, you know, fair lending and banking practices. You know, we serve the local, you know, um, you know, in the local banking community, uh, for many of the retail customers and small businesses in the county through our 19 branch and store network. Um, you know, we also provide grants, foundation support for various community or organizations in the county. Um, in 2020, uh, we provided, uh, 20 grants tolling over 310,000 support. You know, outside of our philanthropic community engagement, um, you know, we're also, you know, active in, uh, in, in the small business community development lending projects. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're proud to have received, um, an outstanding rating under the Community Reinvestment Act of, uh, you know, the outstanding rating for every exam period since inception, um, in 1977. Um, so, so with that, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll turn it over to, to, um, my, my colleague, uh, Bill Best, who's our, um, you know, Community Banking Development, uh, Regional Manager. I, I also will preface that, um, because of, uh, when, when we're starting, I might have a couple colleagues who aren't able to join because they have other obligations. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, um, if, if they're able to. But I just wanted to give you guys the heads up. Um, some in, in our small business lending practice and also mortgage. But I think I, I am able to get some of them to, to, to join later. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to, um, to, to Bill Best to talk about our CRA efforts.
Thank you, An, and thank you for, for joining and giving us an opportunity this afternoon. Uh, An has spoken of a, a big overview, what we've been able to do in community, uh, development, uh, actually from a CRA standpoint. Uh, we have always been committed to the Essex County and especially from an economic development perspective and where we work and where we, uh, live in that particular, uh, county. Uh, please understand too that we are proud that we have a outstanding CRA rating. Uh, one of the things that I want the group to understand today, that we have four primary focus areas, which is economic development, neighborhood revitalization, affordable housing and financial education. We put our resources in those particular areas. We've made a, a very good effort to make sure that we, uh, have provided these dollars in areas of small business lending, mortgages, as well as consumer lending. Also, I just want to highlight the fact that right now that we continue to look at economic empowerment, financial education and entrepreneurship. We're trying to make sure that the ratio equal equity is, is readjusted and that we are focusing on the African-American communities in those particular areas. I will stop right there to see if there's questions that you want to, uh, ask any of me, ask me or any of my colleagues as it relates to our presentation or the CRA exam.
Freeholders, any questions for PNC Bank?
Through you, Madam Chair. My, my question is, what, what do you do around, around the homeless and, um, the homeless veterans? Do you have a program and any opportunity to address the homeless issues here in Essex County?
Freeholder, I think, Richerson?
Yes.
Yes.
We do not have any specific, uh, programs that we are targeting. Uh, we do, uh, target a lot of dollars to our social services organizations in, in Essex County who might in turn assist those veterans or people of homelessness. Uh, but we do not have a program specifically for that. I wish I could tell you that that was the case, but it's not the case. Uh, so we have put a broad base brush on how we approach the market to try to assist, uh, people of need, uh, in those, uh, in those particular communities.
Another question. Are you doing, what, if anything, is, is your bank doing around the, uh, food insecurity issues that's going on around Essex County?
We have, I think there was, uh, I don't know if it was the way that we listed in the grants, but we have been very involved with food insecurity, uh, throughout the state for that matter. Uh, I think, uh, Tom Calamore, you might be able to help me out here. It put some dollars out for food insecurity. There was two, two primary areas, uh, Freeholder Richardson, that we had focused on, especially during the COVID, uh, COVID situation here. One was food insecurity and the other one was a digital divide. So I, while I cannot speak to the exact, I can't recall the exact organization, we have provided dollars in Essex County. And definitely we provided dollars for the digital divide. You recall, I don't recall exactly, um, the organization. I'm going to put you on the spot here, but I would have to really dig down to the numbers to find out what particular organization it was, Freeholder Richardson.
Freeholders, any other questions? Can you provide us with the, um, actual number of small business loans that you actually made in the Essex County market? You provided us with the percentages, but I would like to see the actual numbers. The total, um, volume, the aggregate number that you, um, awarded to the Essex County community. Also, in the report that you sent in to us, you, you have one property that you are actively, that you actively filed foreclosure for. And you have one REO property as of October 31st. What town is that REO property located in? And are you maintaining that property?
Well, I'm going to have to defer to An because he led out with the fact that our mortgage person was not, was not joining us on this call. I do know previously though, uh, when this question came up, it indicated on a previous presentation that we always maintain our properties, whether they're vacant or not. And we always tried to make sure that we find a replacement in that particular property so that there, that, there would be no, uh, continuous blight or that being no deterioration in that particular community based on the property that PNC holds as a mortgage, mortgage holder.
Han, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, um, Melissa, um, is, uh, in our mortgage group and she actually was able to, to stay on and, uh, I'll defer to Melissa. This is her, her area of, of expertise. Melissa, are you on?
She's on, but she's on mute.
You guys hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, I don't have in front of me the exact location of that property, but I will, um, provide that as a follow-up, um, to this call. But the answer that was provided as it relates to the ma- maintaining the property and keeping that in, uh, the appropriate condition is what we do in the foreclosure, uh, department to ensure that there is not blight in the neighborhood and that it is, uh, being prepared for re-market.
Can you, Melissa, talk about what efforts or activities that you do to help a property owner avoid foreclosure?
Sure. Yeah, in our loss mitigation department, um, we have several different options, um, that we offer borrowers. You know, from a full reinstatement, uh, we offer them the ability to refinance. We do offer them the ability to, uh, repay the loan for any of the past due payments. We offer them, uh, forbearance option. So, um, essentially the ability to defer some of those payments depending upon their circumstances, um, that they're faced with. We also offer, um, payment deferrals. So as a follow-up to a forbearance where we may, um, allow that customer to not make payments for up to 12 months. They have the ability then to defer those up to 12 payments to resume to their normal standard payments once their situation is resolved. And then we also have our long-term modifications, um, where we do review the customer situation to, um, understand their affordability, to see if they may qualify for a, um, change in terms, meaning, uh, rate or, uh, the term of the loan.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Freeholders, any other questions? PNC Bank? All right. Well, I thank you guys for appearing before us. If we have any follow-up questions, we will email them to you. So thank you so much for, for being here this evening. Um, stay safe.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Investors Bank should be on the line now.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Oh, Mr. Toronto, I'm so sorry. I was expecting a whole lot of people. We just teeter tottering. So thank you so much for being with us this evening. Can you please just give us an overview of the report and you can highlight the areas that you'd like for us to focus on and then the board will ask you questions.
Sure. Again, thank you for having me. Again, my name is Brian Serrano with Investors Bank, the official sponsor of the world famous train ride at the Turtleback Zoo. I'd like to just go over a little bit of our CA performance from the latest report. On our investment test, we scored an outstanding. Our lending test was a high satisfactory and our service test was a low satisfactory. Regarding section two, our lending activity in Essex County and small business lending, number of loans was thirty-three. Percentage of loans in LMI tracks was forty-eight percent. Percentage of loans to small businesses with revenues less than one million was sixty-four percent and our percentage of loans of a hundred thousand or less was sixty-one percent. Under community development loans, the number and dollar amount in Essex County was ten loans at a hundred and one million dollars. And the number and dollar amount for the following purposes defined in CRA, affordable housing, economic development, revitalization, stabilization, was nine loans for affordable at ninety-nine million. Economic development, one loan for one million three hundred thousand. And the number of grants provided in Essex County, we're very proud of this. CRA qualified nine thousand and COVID-specific loans is two hundred thousand dollars. Under the additional questions section, do we have proprietary home mortgage products for LMI borrowers? We do. We have a CRA lending program. It's an in-house program that we offer to LMI borrowers. Determinations are made based on census tracts, household income within the bank's assessment area and the programs offered on our adjustable rate and fixed products. Their features are it's real nice, rate reductions, lender-paid mortgage insurance, forgivable forgivable down payment in the form of a second lien assistance loan and a credit for the application fee. We also offer a first-time home buyer program. It's offered in conjunction with New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency and also provides down payment assistance grants for New Jersey first-time home buyers. Next section, do you make efforts to serve homeowners and small businesses and minority in low to moderate income neighborhoods? We certainly do. For individuals, like I said before, we do have the first-time home buyer seminar. We host them in our branches around the state and specifically in Essex County as well. We work with our local realtors, our loan officers partner with a lot of realtors and also make them aware of the program. On occasion, we will send out a Realtor listing campaign, which goes straight out to the realtors and identifies folks who would qualify for these loans. For small businesses, we offer first-time home buyer sessions in LMI areas. Our branch staff and through our community development officers, we regularly engage in minority and women-owned business outreach, as you can see by our sponsorships, education sessions and workshops provided throughout the county. On our foreclosure activity, number of foreclosures filed in Essex County in the past year was six. Number of REO properties currently owned by the bank is one and the number of REO properties on the municipal APR list, we're not aware of any at this time. On the banking services piece, number of branches and retail storefronts in Essex County, we have sixteen. All of our branches are ADA compliant and we do have a minority staffing policy and I'll read it real quick. Investors Bank is committed to a policy of equal employment opportunity. It will not discriminate against an applicant or employee on the basis of race, creed, religion, color, national origin, age, ancestry, nationality, marital domestic partnership or civil union status, sex, pregnancy, gender identity or expression, disability, liability for military service, affectional or sexual orientation, atypical cellular or blood trait, genetic information or any other basis made unlawful by federal, state or local law ordinance or regulation. And that's my summary. Happy to take questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Toronto. Any questions? For Investors Bank?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a comment about Investors Bank.
Freeholder?
Thank you. Investors has had a very good and long history with nonprofits. I'm in that field, but I'm not freeholding, as it were. And I've been very familiar with the grants you've given a lot of the nonprofits in particular. When you took over Bluefield Savings Bank here in my town a long, quite some time ago, Bluefield Savings Bank had a very long storied history of being very involved in the community and you guys admire you guys for picking up the ball with that and you continue that legacy. Probably doesn't hurt that your president Kevin Cummings is the St. Peter's Prep guy and I may have some strong affiliation with that, but appreciate the support that you give the nonprofit sector.
I will definitely share that with Kevin.
Thank you, Freeholder Primaris. Freeholders, any questions?
Do you matter, Chair?
Freeholder Richardson?
Very familiar with investors. You guys do a great job working with the communities that you serve. Really appreciate the work that you do. I have a question in terms of do you do anything around veteran housing or housing for the homeless?
I know we have given I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
It cut out a little bit. I apologize.
No, I was asking, do you work in nonprofits or veteran housing, any of those kinds of things?
To be specific, I have sat on the foundation vetting committee and we do definitely push a lot of grants out to veterans. Personally, I'm involved with the New Jersey State Elks Association, the Veterans Committee. And, you know, we pump hundreds of thousands of dollars right back into the veterans. I know we just did a big activity down in Newark, giving out coats and food and all that good stuff about three weeks ago. So, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, Kevin Cummings, we're our chairman, you know, we're encouraged, you know. They love it, you know, we get time off of work to get involved. So very big part of the bank.
Are there any opportunities for some, any other nonprofits who you haven't worked with to at least sit down and have a conversation about some of the things that they do?
Yeah, absolutely. We do have our foundation, which is open to any five oh one C three. Anyone's welcome to apply right through our website. Happy to get that information out to you. And we can also set up a meeting with our Community Development Officer, Sandy Broughton. Some of you may know her. She's all over the place. More than happy to do that for you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Freeholder Richardson. Any other freeholders with questions for Investors Bank? Mr. Toronto, I have a couple of quick questions. Within your report, it talks about a low service test score. What area is that exactly?
I don't have the detail on that, but I can certainly get that to you.
Can you please? Can you also tell us, get, you probably have to get back to us as well. Where is your REO property located and what municipality and what is the status of it?
I can find that out.
All right, and that's it. Those are my questions. So thank you so much, Mr. Toronto, for being with us this evening and answering our questions. We will email you follow-up questions that we have. You have a good evening and you stay safe.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Take care. Bye-bye. Madam Clerk, Santander Bank?
Yes, Madam Chair, Santander Bank is should be up next and it should be Toby Baba and Frank Cosentino.
Okay, so, all right, I see Toby. And it looks like someone else is connecting. So thank you so much for joining us this evening. Please give us an overview of your CRA report. You can, you know, highlight the areas that you'd like to discuss and then the board will follow up with questions. So Frank or Toby, you can, you can start.
Yeah, perfect. I'll jump right in. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Toby Baba. I'm a Community Partnership Manager that supports our CSR and CRA activities throughout the metro New York and New Jersey region. Really glad, you know, to be here today, particularly to talk a little bit about what we've been able to do in Essex County. Though I would say across our entire footprint, Santander is a northeastern bank. Essex County itself is one of our most engaged counties when it comes to our community involvement. So whether that comes to our philanthropic contributions that we do to nonprofits, certainly one of the largest recipients when we think of our counties, really up to a few hundred thousand per year. Everything from housing, so organizations like New Jersey Citizen Action, La Casa, to small business groups like GNAC, Rising Tide Capital, we're big supporters of List, ICIC, just to name a few. For us, it really goes beyond, you know, just philanthropic support. We really want to make sure that the whole point of CRA is we're bringing our banking services to the community and make sure that they're able to access fair and affordable products. So with that, I would say our mortgage area is probably one of the areas I would really love to highlight the most through a partnership with Essex County-based, right, New Jersey Citizen Action. We'd actually created our specific New Jersey Affordable Mortgage Program, which in many ways I think is really unbeatable in the industry. So like many other products that you might hear about that might have the low down payment to get in there, we have grant funds that can be layered on top. So when Neighborhood Lift was happening in Essex County, we were able to layer our own grant on top of that to help out homeowners. But really important to me is helping our individuals stay in their homes. I think right now through the pandemic is a perfect example. And what we really recognize is that lowering the monthly payment is one of the most important things that you can do for a family. And therefore, we actually truly paid for the mortgage insurance that often gets built into individuals' loans. Very often with other banks, they'll talk about a lender-paid mortgage insurance product, but really they're jacking up an interest rate somewhere it's costing the borrower money. We truly paid for that out of pocket. No impact to the interest rate, no impact to the payment, so we could really keep those payments as low as possible. We have a real true suite of products. We accept all the grants. We do deed restricted properties. And what I also really like is being able to take an LMI family or low to moderate income family and turn them into middle income with one single transaction. Part of that discussion with a focus on Essex County was recognizing the high number of multifamily homes that are within the county. And very often for some of the CRA products out there, if a if someone's applying for a multifamily loan and they're going to include the rental income into their qualification, they may no longer qualify for that CRA product. They kind of get counted that income against them. Whereas we changed our product to really allow someone to become a homeowner in that multifamily property and within one tax year, starting to count rental income, go from LMI into middle income. And not to take up the time, we've got so many banks behind us, so just really briefly, small business, I'd be remiss without really pointing out how important this small business is. We support, this is a great organizations. Of all the counties in our area, we've actually perfect pre-pandemic twenty nineteen, we volunteered as a bank more than eight hundred hours serving small business, affordable housing and financial education programs, whether it was getting into East Orange High School, whether we're supporting our events at colleges and universities, Rutgers Q program, we've just been very engaged. And when it came to PPP, we knew that a lot of people were getting shut out and originally may have expressed interest on our website for the PPP loan. What we did is we actually circled back and after we got through our pipeline, personally reached out to every individual who expressed interest, but never actually submitted an application just to make sure that no one got left behind. Lots more we could do. I know Frank, who's, you know, actually also done some more within the county and our government banking team is on the line as well. But I will take a pause because otherwise I'll take up all of your time here and I'll be online.
Thanks, Toby. I'm Frank Cosentino. I'm the Senior Vice President and Senior Director for Government Banking in New York and New Jersey. And I also handle anything out of footprint and complex deals. We have a great relationship with Newark Board of Education where we serve as the primary depository and even leased some of their school buses. We also have a relationship with the city of Newark. So we have been, we've been involved, as Toby mentioned, with the county. So if you have any questions regarding the banking side, that's my area and Toby can take any of your questions on the CRA side.
Freeholders, any questions for Santander Bank? So I do have questions. Your investment test and your service test areas are low satisfactory. What exactly does that mean?
So certainly for us, we intend to be an outstanding bank and institution and particularly in an area where we have such a strong branch coverage, right, as Essex County. We're actually currently going through our latest exam. So the most recent public exam is actually through twenty fourteen through twenty sixteen, so it is quite outdated. Certainly when some of those issues go from some of our legacy predecessor banks, so before Santander, it was Sovereign Bank before the bank made the full acquisition. Since then, we've just done incredible work, particularly on that investment side. So really in the beginning of, just going into twenty sixteen, just part of that, we built out a brand new community development finance team. That's to be very much, that has been focused on the investment side of things in a major way and that's a team of thirteen that's based here locally in the region. So I would certainly expect to see when you see the most, the next CRA exam to come out, a significant increase on that side.
Well, that would be important because as I go through the report that you did provide in the other areas throughout the country that this report included, it's outstanding, high excellence. But in New Jersey, it seems to be low satisfactory. Did you guys actually respond to the questions that the board sent out, the survey questions that the board sent to you?
Yeah, so the CRA compliance side of the bank is the one that responds to the questions. I think there was a mix-up in the original letter that was sent out. It went to the branch, but then was also addressed, I think, to Investors Bank. So I think there was confusion about whether it's to us, I know that we only were just able to begin to respond this week. So I don't think they were able to do anything more than the actual CRA public file. That's sad. I mean, we are literally right in the middle. So as you're requesting us things, we're in the middle of our communication with the OCC for that full CRA exam in the next
So then, freeholders, if you don't mind, I would suggest that we prompt Santander for another time because they did not have an opportunity to complete our survey. So we do not see the answers from them that we're looking to see for us to have a more fruitful discussion and conversation. So if you may, you guys agree, let's set Santander aside. All right, so thank you, David. We'll reach out to you to reschedule this conversation. Please complete that survey in advance and send it back to us.
So I might just jump in really quick. How, I should be the official contact. I think part of the reason that the questionnaire was sort of misrouted because it went to a branch manager who didn't realize, it's an Investors Bank on it. He didn't realize what the nature of the document was. So if I could be listed as the official contact, I can email you my address and phone and other details. That would be great going forward.
Please, please, please do send it to the staff person that made contact with you to make sure that we have the right information for you so that we will send you the correct report that's targeted for Santander Bank.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Costantino, Mr. Baba, for coming this evening. Please stay safe and we'll reach back out for you for another date.
Likewise. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good, good night.
All right, the next group up is Garden State Community Bank? All right. The next group up is Garden State Community Bank. And on my list, I have a Michael Fields. All right.
Yes, I am here.
All right, Mr. Field, there's some additional people. Can you tell us who you have with you this evening, please?
Absolutely. With joining us from Garden State Community Bank, New York Community Bank, we have Tom Graziano. Tom Graziano handles our business banking relationship. And Maria Vasquez, who is a branch manager in one of our branches in the Ironbone District.
All right. All right. So please give us an overview of your response to us this evening. You can have the liberty of highlighting the areas that you would like to talk about and then the board will follow up with questions.
Absolutely. It is indeed a pleasure to come and share with you what we, some of the good things that New York Community Bank and our Garden State Bank Division is doing in New Jersey. New York Community Bank is headquartered in, we're headquartered in Westbury, Westbury, New York. We are regulated by the FDIC. And in our last CRA exam, that our public evaluation that's available, the bank had an overall rating of satisfactory. And in the multi-state CRA assessment area of which Essex County is a part, the bank had a high satisfaction in the lending test, the investment test, as well as in the as well as in the service test. In the, in section two of the report that was prepared, one of the things that we would want to jump out and say is that New York Community Bank is one of the leading multifamily portfolio lenders in the New York, New Jersey area. It is our primary product. It is what we do as a bank. And therefore, the significant share of the bank's multifamily commercial and commercial real estate lending is done within the New York, New Jersey, within New York and also within New Jersey, where rent-regulated apartment buildings tend to be the predominant housing type. With that said, one of the things that the bank is well aware of is that the majority of the multifamily loans that we make as an institution are located either in low or moderate income census tracts or support lower moderate income individuals. We also recognize that multifamily property owners play a very important role in reinvesting in their buildings and reinvesting in their communities. And as such, the bank also is a very prudent underwriter of commercial real estate and multifamily loans. And we do this through the participation of mortgage brokers who understand and are familiar with our lending practices and our underwriting guidelines. With that said, a number of things have to be, we just want to touch on a number of things. The bank does not originate one-to-four residential mortgage loans. The amount of small business loans that we do originate is a very small part of our overall lending. It is, as such, even though it's a small portion of what we do, it is still strategically important for the bank overall. Within the period that we looked at, again, we only, we did three loans. I think it's a total of $1.4 million. So again, it's a very small part of the lending that we do. In comparison to that, the multifamily lending and the commercial real estate lending that the bank has undertaken is significant. Of the 23 loans for almost $225 million, 80% of that 19 loans and almost 70% of the total, 161 million, were community development, addressed a community development purpose. So it either addressed redevelopment and stabilization or were loans that were affordable to individuals who are low or moderate income. A quick back of the envelope statistic that I ran on this is that overall, our lending supported more than almost 2,000 units. So again, even though we don't make mortgage, the residential mortgage loans, one-to-four family loans, we still support individuals and we still provide support to individuals and families that are significant in terms of our overall lending. In terms of, and in relation to the other types of services that we provide, because we make no one-to-four family loans, we have, there is no foreclosure activity within the county. And then when it comes to our banking, the physical retail presence that we have, we have 12 of our 41 branches in New York, in New Jersey are located in Essex County. And of that number, four of the 12 are located in low or moderate income census tracts. NYCB and all of its affiliates are equal opportunity employers and we make it a it is part of the bank's policy to make employment decisions without regards to prohibited practices. And we accommodate our employees and applicants with disabilities and with with religious requirements reasonably well. Our employees are also engaged in community activities. We are involved on boards of organizations. One of the things that we do as a bank and we do well is that we provide financial education workshops in and around our communities where our employees are involved and engaged in doing those, in those types of services. And it is of course reflected in the bank's performance evaluation. So with that said, that just provides a broad overview, a high-level overview of how the bank is engaged in, involved in providing services, supporting the community in ways that promote community development and support the Community Reinvestment Act.
Well, thank you, Mr. Field. Freeholders, any questions?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. The question around veteran housing, veteran opportunities, do you do any? I heard you say you did 2,000 units. You supported 2,000 units. Was any of that for affordable or for veteran housing or homeownership?
Again, we are not a, we don't make homeownership loans to homeowners. We don't have that business or that platform. However, we do refer loans to a third party, through a third-party relationship within the bank. As far as veterans' housing specifically is concerned, we, the loans that we make and the type of lending that we do, it supports a broad spectrum of our community that could include the veterans. And so even though it's not specifically tailored to it, I am sure that as part of the types of units that we support, the borrowers that we have, I am relatively certain that some of them do provide housing to individuals who may be veterans.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize. I couldn't get my audio working. This is Tom Graziano. The third party that Michael referenced that we use for mortgages does offer, it is a VA lender. So they do offer VA loans. I don't have a quantity because anything we refer to them, like Michael said, goes to them and they handle it. But we do have the ability to offer VA loans through this third party. So we do address that need.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So the community lending that you have listed here, do you originate that yourself or do you also do that through the third party?
No. I'm sorry. The loans that we do, the 23 loans that we've made, those are loans that's through the bank and it's on our books by the bank.
Okay. Freeholders, any questions? Any other questions?
We also offer veterans' deposit accounts. Maria, would you like to just mention that? Give a little detail?
Sure.
Thank you.
You know how costly sometimes it could be for customers to get, to go through their banking needs? What NYCB provides for the veterans are a military checking account where, you know, if you're inactive, if you're inactive duty or a veteran with proper ID, we will open a military checking account for you. And this is a no-fee checking account for veterans and your check orders are free every year. And if you have extra money to invest, we do offer an additional 10 basis points to the regular rate for CDs. And CDs, we start it with $500. So there's a lot of incentives for veterans to open an account. And if I may add also, NYCB was ranked in the top 25 of the Military Times 2020 Best Veterans Employers. So I'm very proud to announce that, that we're in the top 25 of employers who hire veterans.
And this is nationwide?
Correct.
Right. And if I can also just extrapolate a little further, this is one of the big initiatives in terms of our hiring initiatives within the bank to really go after and to recruit veterans in terms of our both, not just for the retail side, but for the overall involvement within the bank.
Well, Mr. Field, I want to make sure I get your process correctly. If I was a customer who was looking for a conventional mortgage product, I would come into your bank and then you would refer me to a third-party entity who you are affiliated with to issue that conventional mortgage product for me. If it's for a one-to-four family, but if it's more than four families, four units, you would issue that product yourself?
That is correct, Madam Freeholder.
So can you tell us, and this is a follow-up, something that you have to get back to us on, with that affiliate, how many mortgages do they have within the Essex County community? What is their foreclosure rate? Which services do they offer to help people avoid going through foreclosure? And that question is critical because as we're entering 2021 and if the climate of unemployment stay and remain the way that it is, it's important for us to know that our banking institutions and partners that we do business with have products to support our constituents that may be in need. So can you follow that up for us?
Tom? Yes, I could take that as a takeaway. You'd like to know what the foreclosure rate is in Essex County specifically?
Correct. How many mortgages do they have? What is their foreclosure rate? And what programs and services do they offer people to avoid foreclosure?
Okay. I know they definitely have a program. They had a new one that they added because of COVID. I know they, you know, I don't have the particulars with me, but I'll get that and I can email that to you.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Freeholders, if you don't have any more questions? I'd like to thank Garden State Community Bank for being before us this evening. Thank you guys so much for coming. You stay safe.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The next bank up should be Wells Fargo.
All right. Freeholders, we're almost done. Thank you so much for hanging there and with me. Not yet. Almost.
I got your back, Freeholder Cooper.
Oh, thank you so much.
But my, but my tummy is rumbling. I'm just letting you know and I can smell some.
My kids are under the table looking at me because it's Taco Tuesday in my house. All right. So we have some folks that just joined us from Wells Fargo Bank. Are there other people waiting in the waiting room? If you give us their names, we can try to grab them.
There is no one else in the waiting room at all.
There's no one else in the waiting room.
There should be three other people in the waiting room. Vanetta Hawkins, Louz Lockward, and Tomas.
Louz is on. Tomas is here. Louz, this popped up.
I'm here.
Like Vanetta Hawkins. Thank you, honey. Thank you. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. So we're asking for you to please give us an overview of your response that you send in to us. You can highlight the areas that you want to talk about and then the freeholders will follow up with questions. So Wells Fargo, you guys can get started.
I believe we lost Tomas and Vanetta.
Oh, okay. So our staff will work on bringing them back while we're waiting on that to happen. Can?
Yeah, they're logging in again. There they go.
Okay, there we go. So Wells Fargo, you can start.
Did Tomas get in?
Yes, Tomas is back.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We hear you, Tomas.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Perfect. Sorry that it technical difficulties, challenges. Good evening, freeholders of Essex County. Thank you very much for the invitation to be here and answer any questions you may have in reference to the recent survey that we have provided. My name is Tomas Porturas. I am the Vice President of Social Impact and Sustainability for Northern New Jersey. In my role, I support a company's social responsibility efforts that includes employee voluntarism, activism, and sustainable community impact. I work with our team members, many of them from Essex County, in deploying resources to neighborhoods they needed the most, including housing bills, financial education, small business support, and school renovation projects in low-to-moderate income areas. By the way, we have 544 employees that live in Essex County and 313 employees that work in this county. So I want to highlight the most recent 2012, 2018 CRA performance evaluation that we have received, and it is outstanding. Largely driven by the dedication and voluntarism of our employees. Also, it reflects Wells Fargo's continued commitment to our LMI or Low and Moderate Income Communities. And it is in lending, servicing, and investments. In addition to that, I would like, in addition to the information that we have provided in the survey, I would like to share with you briefly a few things that we are doing to help our Essex County and all our New Jersey residents during these trying times. We have supported a group of young NJIT students in their initiative to produce face shields for frontline workers, especially for the medical personnel. We have supported the United Way of Greater Newark with their COVID-19 Fund, which is an effort to tackle immediate and long-term needs of community members, organizations, and small businesses in 13 municipalities. Also, through our diverse community capital, which is a Wells Fargo initiative, the focus is on entrepreneurship. We have invested over $100 million to help community development financial institutions so they can help small businesses, especially in low-income areas. Also, Wells Fargo right now is investing $400 billion to help small businesses throughout the country. So far, three organizations have received the commitment to get financial support. During this year, our Northern New Jersey During this year, our Northern New Jersey Foundation has given the flexibility to all nonprofit organizations that we support so they can use the awarded grants in any way they think they need so they can stay open, so they can continue providing the services that is very much needed in their communities. Also, our team members continue participating in an increasing demand for financial workshops, which are organized by nonprofit organizations to help the youth, families, all our residents, and of course, small businesses. And we encourage all our team members to find ways, any way they can contribute to our communities. And during this month of September, we have a campaign, which is just for team members to donate, to find ways, any way that they can see possible to help any organization of their preference. So with funds, with volunteer hours, so that they can help our communities. And now, this is a brief, and I would like to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Louz Lockward. I'm a community outreach consultant and I serve the entire state of New Jersey. In my role, I work with housing counseling agencies that help homeowners, help customers get into homeownership and help current homeowners to remain in their home. So for the survey today, I know what we have to cover, how many properties we have in REO. As of November 19th, we have four properties in REO. That's in West Orange, Livingston, South Orange, and Bloomfield. And then also, how many of the REO properties are currently on the municipal APRI list in Essex County? We also have four. That's in Irvington, Newark, Moncler, and Bloomfield. Also, I know it's a concern for everyone as the year that we're leaving, what we're doing for homeowners that are facing payment challenges during COVID-19. So we do have programs that help customers, either COVID or non-COVID, to remain in their home. It's either by short-term assistance, what do you call it, payment suspension, that is shortened for a specific amount of time. And then once they're ready to resume their mortgage payments, it could be either a repayment plan, a deferment plan, or the standard loan modification. Also, for those properties that are vacant and abandoned or that have been foreclosed, you know, any property that is acquired by Wells Fargo through a foreclosure action or it's liquidated or conveyed in accordance with investor insurance servicing guidelines and requirements. Those are, what are the best use for, that become real estate owned by Wells Fargo, are sold to third parties or donated to our nonprofits in the market to acquire such properties. And that's my portion for today. I'm going to pass it to my peer, Vanetta Hawkins.
Thanks, Louz. Thanks, Tomas. Hi, everyone. My name is Vanetta Hawkins. I am a market consultant in our Diverse Segments Division from Home Lending. I manage our homeownership strategy around increasing homeownership in LMI, Low and Moderate Income, and minority communities across the Northeast, from New Jersey up to Maine, and the fabulous, which includes the fabulous Essex County. Part of this survey, you asked us some questions around what we're doing in the LMI space. Wells Fargo has two commitments, and you can find them within the survey around African-American homeownership and Hispanic homeownership. Our commitments, we started one back in 2017 for our Hispanic commitment, and both of them have three major pillars. The first one is to increase our mortgage originations in the Hispanic and African-American communities. The Hispanic commitment is for $125 billion in originations over a 10-year period, and our African-American one is $60 billion over a 10-year period. The second piece of the of the commitment is around providing funding in a grant perspective to nonprofits that are doing homebuyer education and foreclosure prevention within the space. With our Hispanic commitment, we did 10 million. We invested 10 million over the 10-year period. And for the Black and African-American, it is 15 million. And then the third component is just really increasing our African-American and Hispanic home mortgage consultants that work with Wells Fargo in our sales division. So that's some of the things that we've been really intentional around when it comes to homeownership. We also have our premier product, which is a conventional mortgage product for low-down payment consumers. There are no mortgage, no geography restrictions, no income restrictions. It is solely a product that we created to be able to help as many homeowners as possible achieve the dream of homeownership if they can only make a small down payment. So it's a great product that we have, we launched it back in 2016 and have been really moving forward with it. So super excited about that. And then the third piece that we have, where we talked a little bit about our Neighborhood Lift Program and sent it, you know, other institutions mentioned our, mentioned our program. So Wells Fargo has what's called a Neighborhood Lift Program, and it is really a revitalization program to bring and increase and lift homeownership of in certain markets. So we actually had this program back in 2013, and it was in Newark and it was in New York and Newark Market. And we brought it back again in 2017, last year, 2019, October. And most of those homeowners, it was, we did 180 grants, and most of those homeowners became homeowners this year, even with COVID. So we actually, it was $5 million, a $5 million investment in Essex County, creating 180 new homeowners. We also had two grants where we were able to do $100,000 from some local initiatives and $250,000 for Lift the Block, actually it's flipped. $100 for Lift the Block and $250,000 for local initiatives. And we provided some grant funding to various different nonprofits in the Essex County market. So that's our premier product. The consumers did not have to get their mortgage through Wells Fargo. We would love if they did, but they did not. It was open to various different banks without the, throughout this, throughout the county. And we worked with one of NeighborWorks Premier Nonprofits, New Jersey Community Capital, out in this space. So really, we were happy to be able to lift the block in the Essex County market with that Neighborhood Lift Program. So that's what I have for for a homeownership purchase perspective. And I guess maybe turn it back over to Tomas and for Louz, and if you guys have any questions for us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Louz and Vanetta. And now we are open for any questions that you may have.
Freeholders, any questions for Wells Fargo?
Yes, yes. Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Freeholder.
Your your list of properties that you that you have, you own in the County of Essex. I've I've had some situations with the maintenance of your properties, your abandoned properties that were taken in foreclosure. What, how many buildings do you have in foreclosure in Essex County? How many properties do you have?
Yeah.
This is Louz. Wells Fargo does not does not compile this informational foreclosure for public distribution. I apologize. So I'm not able to tell you how many numbers of foreclosures I've filed in Essex County in the past year. However, I would tell you, 2020, we're leaving COVID. So you know that all foreclosure activities are paused or suspended for the year until whatever is going to happen with the.
You don't have those numbers before COVID?
I do, but I'm not able to share it for public distribution. So stated on the survey.
But Freeholder, one thing that I would like to indicate is that we always do our best to keep families in their homes, without a doubt, this.
Yeah, and I can speak to you, Freeholder, more about what we have been doing during COVID for those homeowners that are in distress. So obviously, we all learned from what happened 10 years ago. I was present myself working with home preservation. So our technology was deployed that we have videos on our website, thewellsfargo.com/forwardmortgageassist, with a lot of FAQs for those who are thinking, who are in distress with their payments, if they have lost their jobs or if they were affected directly on their health by COVID. And it goes on detailed explanation. Also, the easy access that you can either dial in, go into the mobile app, or use it through the, it's like the mobile app on their website to request the forbearance, which is, as you know, is part of the CARES Act. Then also, most people are that are getting into forbearance and they're questioning, or they don't even go in, what could happen when I'm ready to resume my regular mortgage payment? So we also have another dedicated site, that is wellsfargo.com/forwardrepaymentdetails, and that goes into every single servicer, I mean, I'm sorry, investor that we service for. Maybe FHA, VA, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, or the Wells Fargo owned and other private portfolios. What are those look like? And those are the same that I explained before. You can either have a repayment plan, a deferment plan, or just your standard loan modification.
So Louz, I'm sorry, Freeholder Johnson, I'm gonna just jump in and interject for one moment. It sounds like you feel a little bit uncomfortable with disclosing what that foreclosure number is right now. But there was another part of Freeholder Johnson's question about maintenance of those, of those.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, we do. I understand because I serve the entire state of New Jersey and I get those escalations all the time. So when those situations arise, and I apologize, Freeholder, I totally went over the other thing. But when those situations arises, we do work directly with the vendor to make sure that they are doing the job that we contract them to do.
So so for Freeholder Johnson's question, in Essex County, who maintain those properties? Do the bank do it or is it a third-party vendor that does it? I'm sorry.
We work with third-party vendors. Yes, and we do have field inspectors who are local to Essex County that they have to go through and make sure that those are safe and secure according to what we're supposed to do.
The reason why I raised that also is because Thomas, no, he's worked with me on the board for the Business Improvement District. He knows we're up there in Valesburg. We have a lot of of unoccupied buildings and some of them belong to, a lot of them belong to Wells Fargo. And we have to stay up on making sure that those are taken care of. And I know if they're like that up there in Valesburg, I can imagine on other parts, not to say that you guys are slum lords or anything of that nature. Now, I don't get the wrong impression because I've had a great three or four years working with Thomas and we've been doing a great job up there in Valesburg. But I'm saying that because a lot of the people that even call in about issues as far as homes being taken and things of that nature is Wells Fargo. That's why.
I'm sorry, go into whenever you have you have my contact information, when there is a property that you have a concern that is not being very well maintained, you're free to reach out to me. At times, I would say, as I cover the entire Northeast, all the way from Delaware to Maine, sometimes the information that is on the court system, we may serve as the trustee or we may not be the servicer. We may be the investor on the loan. So sometimes I do get escalations that they come up thinking that always Wells Fargo, but at the end of the day, it's not us. We just have another role. But feel free to reach out to me when you have those.
Well, I still got Thomas's number. I could still call Thomas.
Yeah, exactly.
And by the way, please allow me to add something else. Louz and all of us work very closely with nonprofit organizations like UVSO, as one, you know, you closely know. And also, for instance, just to give an example, the Urban League, La Casa de Don Pedro. And we ask, sometimes we come with big initiatives to help these organizations to reach out to these families that are, you know, facing challenges. And through these organizations, we find a way to help them. But also, if you if you see a property that is abandoned and you think it is Wells Fargo, please contact me. I will make sure that we find out soon, you know, very quickly and let you know. If there is an opportunity for us to do something with that property, we will though. Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, I have a question or a statement, if you may.
Yes, Freeholder.
So I think it's important for our colleagues at Wells Fargo to understand that you're, all of the banks that proceeded, you did answer those questions and did volunteer that information about your foreclosure. I understand you have your company policy, but I think that's something you need to go back to tell your superiors that we need to know. It's a very important question here, and it's a big part of why we're having these kind of open discussions. And as of right now, you're the only bank that can't give us that information. And we're not asking you very specific addresses and stuff like that, but everyone else was able to tell us how much was going on in Essex County. And you're not, and I think that's really important. So if you take anything home, at least as far as I'm concerned, take that back to your bosses and let them know that we want to know this stuff the next time you come back here, because I think it's critically important. At least the next time we have this meeting, you're here. Rest assured, I'll ask that question, and I think that's important. And I'm not going to say I speak to everybody else, but if anybody else wants to chime in, feel free. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well said.
We will, I'm taking this away. This question, I will get that information. Thank you, Freeholder.
100%. Through you, Madam Chair. I also want to echo those same sentiments from my two colleagues. But I want to ask this. You can't tell us how many properties foreclosed on in Essex County? Can you tell us approximately? Can you tell us if they're boarded up? When you said they're secure, what exactly does that mean? Does that mean that you have properties that have been foreclosed on in the communities where folks live and you've boarded them up? Because that brings down property values. So can you answer that question?
So when a property is either vacant and going through the foreclosure process and where we are required to maintain it so the neighborhood is safe and secure, meaning it has to be boarded, locked, and is not a health hazard for the community? And those are the other people, yeah, unlocked. There are situations that I have encountered myself, and I cannot say from top of mind that, I mean, it's a it's a housing problem. I'm not saying this is an Essex County problem, that they could be squatters going in, and that's a whole complex scenario. But we are required to have it safe and secure for the safety of the community. And that's what we're doing.
So and so that, but you do understand that that adversely affects the homeowners? Because by you going in, foreclosing, and boarding up a property, it brings everybody's property value down. You do realize that as well, right?
Right. There's always, nobody wants an empty home in their neighborhood. So that's why with the process of conveyance and when we go through what happens with our property, if it's sold off for a closure sale or donated to a nonprofit, you want to move that property as fast as you can so the neighborhood is maintained very well. It doesn't affect all the other homeowners living there.
That's great, because I have some folks who are interested in doing some veteran housing. So you're talking about donating properties. I'd love to connect you so we can have those conversations.
Thank you.
Yes, Freeholder, if you allow me, I would like to add, since you asked about veterans, and this is, I think, will answer your question about abandoned properties. We understand that we don't want to have any property, abandoned property in any neighborhood. And what we do, we work with nonprofit organizations and we find a way to make these property productive. So so far, just to share with you some numbers, so far, we donated over 400 homes to veterans, which is around $6 million, $60 million. And so if this is just to this community, to the veteran community, over 400 homes. So but we also have worked and we continue working with nonprofit organizations. If you, if we talk about Essex County, yes, like for instance, Habitat for Humanity in Newark. We work with the organizations that we mentioned. UVSO, for instance, every year, we go there, we dedicate our time, hours, and we donate, we give funds to rehabilitate the properties. So we do our best to get to get these properties productive.
Thank you so much. I keep hearing pretty much the same names from all of the banks. So it seems like the same nonprofits continue to get all of the resources. So there are some other nonprofits who do great work, who haven't been mentioned. So those are the ones I'm talking about, right? La Casa de Don Pedro, Habitat, UVSO, they've been all, they do great work, but they seem like they get 95% of all the resources. There are other nonprofits out there that do great work who don't seem to get an opportunity. Those are the ones I'm talking about. I'd like to have those conversations to see them get an opportunity as well.
Please feel free to email us the list of these nonprofit organizations that you would like us to connect with. And we, I would be very happy to talk to them, find. And we, I, I will be very happy to talk to them, find ways to partner to help our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that would be very, very helpful. Um, because when reviewing prior reports, since the board has started doing these bank surveys, Wells Fargo had a high, one of the higher, um, foreclosure rates. So this issue about the foreclosure rate and the activities and things that you guys are doing to help impact that positively for our constituents is important for us. Um, piggybacking off something that Freeholder Vice President Richardson just said, what is your process for taking some of those REO properties and turning them over to nonprofits? Like, do you guys have a RFP process? Or is it just you developing a relationship with those nonprofit organizations? How, how does that work?
Can cover that. This is Luz. Uh, when a property is eligible for donation, we have a, I cannot give you exact number, how many, uh, nonprofits registered on our contact list that they have reached out to us prior that they are interested in, um, putting those properties back to use in the community. So when that, those properties came into, uh, whatever area, we reach out to them and, uh, the process begins. As I, I could say, since I've been in this role, I believe only I've seen, I haven't seen one nonprofit in Essex County, but in other counties of the state of New Jersey.
Luz, I think earlier that you, you talked about, did I hear correct that you right now have recent four REO properties between Irvington, Newark, Moncler and Bloomfield? Or did I miss here? Did I get the list mixed up?
Yes. Let me pull this up. Yeah, you said it correct. You said, uh, the four properties in REO owned West Orange, Livingston, South Orange and Bloomfield.
Okay. So when you said that there's a, a process that the nonprofits need to register and then go through whatever your internal process is for evaluation on if this is something that they could be eligible to receive?
Yeah. And that's in place. So not all properties that are REO goes into the donation process.
Right.
I would clarify, but those are, uh, those nonprofits that we work with, uh, they, we get those all the time because especially to, uh, bring housing to a better place in our communities. So they get reached out when we are, uh, to donate properties to a good use in the community.
All right. All right. And then you said earlier that it's the private companies that maintain the REO properties that the bank has. And that you will serve as a contact for us because we often get complaints from our municipalities about various vacant and abandoned properties. And we, you know, try our best to bring our resources together to help them address concerns within their local communities.
So I'll be happy to explain where, why, where the confusion goes. So a bank may serve as a servicer, meaning let's say, uh, somebody came a home, uh, effective homeowner, opened a loan that is FHA. So we service for FHA. We service for, uh, Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac. Or we service for our own portfolio or other private investors at times because people think that, uh, oh, it may be Wells Fargo, maybe Bank of America, or maybe any other one. Who's the servicer is the one responsible to maintain that property? Now, if there's at times, if we are the investor, we can put, uh, the request to the servicer that are servicing on our behalf. So these properties are, uh, in good, uh, maintenance. But I, again, as I said, there is a lot, this is a consensus throughout the region at times in those paperwork throughout the courts, our name could be thrown out there. It's very familiar. So it's always good to confirm, uh, who is the servicer of the property, not the investor.
Okay. Well, thank you. Freeholders, any other questions for Wells Fargo? Well, thank you all so much for appearing before us and responding and answering our questions. If we have any follow-up questions, we will email you. Please provide us with whatever additional information that we requested from you as well. We thank you so much for being with us this evening. You stay safe. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, I want to move to see if there's any other business on the agenda. Okay. Madam Chair, I have no information, um, uh, regarding other business. Okay. Thank you. Um, then if there's no other comments, questions, concerns from the other freeholders, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let me do that, Madam Chair. Just wanted to say thank you and thank you to all our colleagues for their participation tonight and their, uh, most poignant questions. Uh, Commissioner Primaris, you know, you took the words right out of my mouth. Uh, when you said what you said to, uh, Wells, appreciate your participation. And, and everyone else who, on their, um, uh, Johnson, uh, Mercado. And thank you, Madam Chair, for putting this together. Appreciate it.
No problem, Freeholder Vice President Richardson. I want to thank you all for joining me and for hanging in with me. This went a lot longer than we initially planned, but I thought it was important for us to ask these questions and to do our jobs and have the banks appear before us, um, in this, you know, revised capacity that we have. Your questions were important. Um, they were right on. And I think it's some things that we need to tweak with this survey so that we truly get the information that we're looking for from these financial institutions.
You know, hello, and, uh, Madam Chair, you know, it's very important because Wells Fargo is one of the biggest, biggest banks that has a lot of foreclosures all throughout Newark and, and, in certain areas. And, and even in some of the other towns like East Orange, Orange, uh, and they don't want to get, all of a sudden, they don't want to give us the number.
There's no more. Let me ask him.
Yeah. So, um, Freeholder Primaris was right on. I think you took the words out of all of our mouths when you asked, when you made the statement that you did. So I appreciate it so very much.
Must have been the timing and the fact that dinner's getting ready. So we had to move that along. In all seriousness, uh, it, you know, I think it's very important that, you know, for also, for the times that we do request more information for our banks, that we also acknowledge the, the very good work that some of the banks have been doing as we alluded earlier with their community involvement. And some of that work goes well beyond what we see with the, what the survey will, will do that. So, uh, if we are able to tweak the survey a little bit, I'd like to see if maybe we can add just a little bit of opportunity for them to be able to express some of that above and beyond, right, that we should, um, um, you know, celebrate. Because we're not really, we're not here to punish. We're here to, you know, bring attention to all of the details and be as transparent as possible. And so while perhaps this ended a little bit more in the negative with, uh, what we wanted more detail for, uh, with specifically that last bank, um, there are a lot of other banks that did some good things. And I think we need to make sure that we're, all of our attempts are well-rounded. I think everybody who was involved and asked great questions, uh, Freeholder, thank you very much for chairing this very important committee today. And I think that, uh, you know, we'll, we will continue to make it, you know, better every time we go around with this. And, uh, the expectations will be when those banks come before this board, that they're going to know what they have to, you know, talk about. And, uh, I think that the more we do it, the better they'll get at it.
I think your point is well taken. Um, I want to put on the record that Connect One Bank was scheduled to be before us. Um, for whatever reason, it didn't happen. Bank of America, we will need to reschedule and work out something with them. As well as Santander Bank, who didn't quite do what we requested of them for the survey. They only sent us in their CRA report. So we may have to, uh, reconvene for those three, um, entities. Uh, Madam Clerk, I don't know, do we leave the committee open? Or do we adjourn? There's like two or three entities that, that need, um, to come back before us. Um, that's a good question. I think that maybe we can just, uh, adjourn this meeting and maybe just have a second meeting. Um, let me see if I can, um, um, talk to my right brain and see if she has any, uh, input on.
If, if I may, I, I would recommend that we adjourn the meeting. And if we wish to go forward with other, um, uh, banks that did not, um, weren't able to participate, that we just schedule an additional meeting.
I, I agree. Thank you.
I guess that was your right brain?
Thank you, counselor.
Was that, uh, your right, was that your right brain?
No, that's my, that was my counselor. My right brain is Debbie. That's my counselor there. Love and power. Love and power. Debbie sitting in the background. Cause for a minute I started to say, who did she keep motioning to that, that's back over there off to the side that we can't see?
My son to be like, please go away.
Oh, don't even go there. I'm there right now. Remember Taco Tuesday here. I gotta get to. So thank you so much. If our hearts and minds are clear, let's, let's adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, everybody.
Have a good evening.